If everyone would take their seats, please. Welcome to the Santa Rosa County Board of County Commissioners Committee meeting. Today is Monday, December the 8th, 2014. It's nine o'clock a.m. We're going to start the meeting with prayer by Commissioner Cole and the pledge by Commissioner J.O. Williamson, if you will please stand.
All please join me. Great heavenly Father, Lord, we just thank you for all the gifts that you've given us, Lord. And as we go into this month and this meeting, Lord, just remember that the reason that we celebrate your birth at the end of this month, Lord. Lord, we just thank you for the ability to meet as free people, Lord, and speak our peace and make decisions on behalf of this county, Lord. Lord, and I pray that you guide each and every one of these commissioners, that we do things in your will, and we all be civil with each other and remember to love each other. Lord, we pray for those that are sick, and we pray for our military, Lord, and protect them and guide them, keep them safe. And we give you praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would ask anyone, if you have a cell phone or other devices, will you please turn those off, put them in a mute mode? Anyone wishing to speak today, make sure you fill out a blue speakers form. Also, today, we have a very lengthy agenda. We only meet one time in December, so if you choose to address the board today, I would ask you to be brief, keep your comments to about three minutes if you can, unless you're already scheduled to make a presentation. You're going to see today in the agenda, there's going to be some new committee chairs. Those are internal committee chairs. Those have already been appointed by me. Later on, we'll talk about some external appointments to other committees as well. This time, we're going to approve the agenda for today, and I'll start with my right with Commissioner J.O. Williamson.
I have no additions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Cole.
Mr. Chairman, one very brief addition concerning the Home Builders Association. We could add that to the add man at your discretion.
We'll make that number 28 on add man.
Thank you. No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Lynch.
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Walker.
Go ahead.
Mr. Attorney.
No changes.
Mr. Engineer. Mr. Budget. Okay. We will now approve the agenda as amended without objection. Here none. It is approved. We kind of have a unique opportunity on this board. We have two commissioners with the same last name, so when I address them, I'm going to try to remember to say Commissioner J.R. Williamson and Commissioner Rob Williamson. I think Commissioner J.R. Williamson's already pointed out, if anything is good, it's that Commissioner Williamson; if anything bad, it's this Commissioner Williamson over here, so. We'll go ahead and get started with the agenda. I'll turn it over to the Economic Development Committee Chair, Commissioner Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have five items for discussion today. The first is tourist development office marketing update, and I'd like to introduce Julie Morgan, the Director of our TDC, and she's going to introduce our speakers today.
Today, we have with us our advertising agency, Davis, South, Barnett and Patrick, out of Mobile, Alabama, and we're glad to have them here today, and they are going to present and show everyone what they've been working on since past February till current, as well as the future plans for the next year coming up. So I'd like to welcome them now, and they're going to give us a brief presentation. Thank you.
When you start the presentation, if you will, give us your name and address, please.
Meredith South.
Karen Rodriguez.
Don Davis.
Dave Barnett.
And you need to address, you said? 205 St. Emmanuel Street, Mobile, Alabama, 36602. All right, thank you very much. We appreciate you allowing us to speak to you today. We're very excited to get you up to speed on what's been happening in the county since the past February, but even beyond that, and talk about the future. We do have a presentation that'll be up on the screen.
When we came in, in February, we immediately deployed what was an existing approved plan. One change that we did encourage from the beginning was, as much as possible, a switch to Internet, digital advertising, because we felt that that was going to be, really result in more return on investment, which we have seen across the year. We came in and were able to update the vacation guide immediately, and kind of see the cover of that, the inside, updated that with some of the photography that had been taken in the previous year that hadn't really been utilized yet, and continuing cross-promotion of all sides of the county. As we were in the meetings, we heard a couple of things, more and more looking for sort of a big idea in promoting the county, and increasingly wanting even more of the cross-promotion of the attractions across the county. And to do that, after last year, having the new brand of Florida's Playground, we established a Florida's Playground Trail as a way of telling people about various sites from the beach to the north end that would create different itineraries for visitors, and also gave us an opportunity to have a press conference that got a very nice response. We also created a trail guide that's available in print, so that when someone goes to any of the attractions in Santa Rosa County, there's a chance to promote the other attractions as well, and we created a version of that for the Internet.
Planning for the future, as you know, we did have some BP money this year, as we have in the last three years. We really have looked at that as sustaining growth whenever we utilized it. This year, we looked at doing new photography and videos that will take us through 2016. As we all know, we probably won't have that money coming up, so we wanted to make sure that we were using it to the benefit. The photography and the video is going to show the diversity of all the attractions and activities that we have here, and the diversity of visitors that we receive. Here's just a sampling of some of the shots that we took about a month ago. And then we also have, we have created four TV spots. With the amount of time that we have today, we're just going to show you one here, so
It's amazing what you can do in just one weekend on Florida's Playground Trail, even if it's absolutely nothing. From historic Milton to Navarre Beach, florida'splayground.com.
Planning for the future as well, one of the things we did with the BP funds was the fifth annual Navarre Beach Sand Sculpting Festival. We always, again, are looking for ways to help the area grow and sustain new attractions, and this year, one of the things that we looked at promoting was the Navarre Beach Marine Park. So all of the funds, this was the first year that we collected funds at the gate, and it was a donation process, so all of those donations, which we collected about $6,700 roughly, went directly to the Marine Park. Public relations this year generated about $398,000. That was pure PR value, nothing paid for there. One of the big hits that I like to talk about was the Bloomberg Business Report, and how we talked about the growth in Santa Rosa County and what it accomplished. Karen did a great job with that one. We reached about 1.2 million in traditional media, and public relations reached online viewerships of about 55 million. The Internet, online advertising that Dave referred to earlier, we did increase your media spend this year to promote, to move from print into the Internet world a lot more than what we had in the past, and we've gotten great results from it. These are just the click-through rates that show month to month, of which months performed better on the online world. These are our different creative messages that we have. The history message, which, it was a wonderful ad that said it still exists, and it talked about old Florida. That one, by far, did the best, as we've seen across all of our media spend. It really appealed to people. Followed by our outdoor adventure ad, the beach ad and the zip line. You can see they all kind of ranked right there together. Then, interestingly enough, something that we are able to do in the online world a lot easier is open up new markets and really see what markets our people are attracted to out there. We're also able to take the markets that we know are successful to us, and take people like that and go out and find those places. So these are the top 10 DMAs that performed, based on click-through rate. Columbus, Georgia, Little Rock, Arkansas, Jackson, Mississippi, Alexandria, Louisiana, Memphis, Ohio, New Orleans, Knoxville, Lake Charles and Nashville. Right behind all of that was our normal markets of Birmingham, Memphis, Atlanta. So it's interesting that you can see the people who knew us were already booking and not necessarily looking at our advertising, but the new people were coming and seeing it. Building a better one.
We revised the website this year, based on the response that we were seeing on the advertising. Visits are up to the website. Some things that were changing, though, we noticed that there was less and less response to via desktop, and a lot more on mobile advertising on tablets. So as we look at the gains that are being made, we see that a lot of it is coming from there. Just backing up a little bit to when the advertising was down, October through February, the traffic on the website dropped by 25%. Once we got that back up, we're able to regain that 25%, and then additional 8% growth as well. We're revising the website now to be much more streamlined and very adaptive to the way that you're viewing it, whether that's on any size of desktop, or a tablet, or an iPhone as well. Some of the features that we're using with this, smaller copy, a little bit more direct approach, more emotional approach that you'll also see in the advertising, a complete visual redesign. And one of the things that we've done with all the new photography is created a visual index. If you look towards the bottom of that homepage, that's actually a scrollable bar of photos. They're very compelling photography that we have, that we've just shot, and as you click on those, that'll take you through the various sites in the county.
We also wanted just to give you a little background of the success that we've had working with you all over the years. This is just your bed tax growth from 2008 until present. Since 2008, you'll notice that you've had a 97% growth in bed tax, and 128% since the oil spill. This is the bed tax growth this year, county over county. That 31%, as y'all know, if you've seen the numbers, I'm sure, has the half-cent tax in it, but even without the half-cent tax, you're still up double digits, outperforming all of your neighboring counties.
And looking ahead on keeping that growth going, we were listening to the TDC's planning goals from recent meetings, a desire more and more for connectivity, improving the connection with the snowbirds, a strong trade show presence, which we know is something that Julie can bring us, that we haven't really had before, the continued development of the shoulder season, something that we want to push even more by emphasizing weekend getaways. We'll continue to differentiate Navarre Beach. You saw we're doing very, very well competitively. We want to keep that trend going, using that to promote the north end as well, leveraging the advantages of the Playground Trail for the diversity of attractions that people can come here for, bringing in new visitors with races and events, using that as an angle that we have not been able to so much in the past, proactively reaching groups. That's something we anticipate working on a lot more with Julie. Developing a stronger wedding market as well, building the new winter resident base, and then expanding something that's been very successful for us so far, which is the homeschooler and educational value of the vacation. Looking at what really led the way in terms of response in the last year, that history ad had a very strong emotional appeal. It was a very brief headline, really got to the experience of connecting with something that you didn't think maybe still existed, that the consumer didn't. So we're going to continue to use that approach, a brand voice that's very authentic and sincere and focused, and more and more doing that through one highly focused image and experience. To do that, as we always try to promote the entire county, now with the Playground Trail, we're able to lead with that strong appeal of one experience, and then reference the Playground Trail as a way for visitors to explore the rest of what the county has to We'll be focusing in the coming year, the individual ads, on the pure beach experience that we have with Gulf Island's National Seashore, the adventure that we offer so close by in the north end, the educational value, the story of the golf legends that come from here, and the community that was behind those stories, the fishing tales that come out of here, the great experience of the rodeo and the pier itself, weddings here that are very different from what you could hold anywhere else, the racing in an area that has so much historic value and is known for a slower pace. It's a nice opportunity to set that off with racing, the history, and really giving snowbirds or winter residents a place that they can call their own and take some ownership of by coming here and experiencing a little bit of a warmer welcome. There are new opportunities that we know we can pursue now with Julie onboard, the intersection of travel and economic development, as we look at snowbirds, people that might move to this area and have an interest in opening the kind of businesses that we'd like to greet visitors with, supporting her activity at the trade shows. We're currently working on trade show displays to accomplish that, the kind of collateral, brochures, et cetera, printed pieces that she can take to that, and then creating a much more engaging experience at the visitor's center.
With the media this year, we'll continue to constantly change the digital up and play with that and see what's working and what's not, because it has been very successful. The shoulder season, we're going to emphasize weekend distance offers, try and get some of those weekend travelers in more. The highly targeted, high-impact print that we know has worked, some of the vacation guides and things like that, that we've done year over year that have performed good results. And then, of course, you've seen one of the TV spots. Those will run probably from January to April is the timeframe in some of our key feeder markets. Then we'll also be doing media pitches on the PR level to support the strategies of the campaign. The races and events this year are going to be highly targeted, the historical storylines, connections to the famous golfers, unique weddings, the fishing, of course, the trail, as we've talked about, and the Weekend Getaway Series. Thank you for your time. Do y'all have any questions for us?
Thank you. Great presentation. Great job showcasing Santa Rosa County and what you've been able to do so far, and it looks like you've put together a real good plan for the coming year and the out-years after that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, members of the board? Commissioner Sauter.
Mr. Chairman, I was glad to see in one of your parts of your presentation attract new visitors with races and events. I've always thought we kind of missed the boat with some of our baseball, softball, soccer parks, and some of the huge tournaments that we hold. A lot of out-of-town people come to those tournaments, so I would hope that we would try to find a way to take advantage of that.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman. Williamson. I just wanted to let the board know that ahead of the January workshops that we're going to be meeting with different tourism stakeholders, with Shannon, with Julie, the advertising team, to try to put forth a clear idea of a vision to bring before this board for discussion on the January workshops. Thanks.
Mr. Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I was too glad to see the races on there, because currently, there's some folks working on a powerboat race for Blackwater River. And I hope to see that go through.
Absolutely.
I believe they've recently reached out to FWC and, you know, different entities that have to give their approval on that, so any way you can help them through that, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you all for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, this is today only. No need to carry this over to Thursday's meeting. Item number two, discussion of fiscal year 2014, 2015 Defense Reinvestment Grant with Enterprise Florida, Inc., in the amount of $50,000 for Military Affairs Consulting and Other Services to Foster Military and Community Relations. This is one of those reoccurring grants. Any discussion, questions, members of the board, the public?
I would just note that this trues it up to the state fiscal year. This will run through June 30th.
Okay.
As opposed to going the full year, so that's the way.
Okay. I'll move this to Thursday without objection.
Here none it passes.
And item three is discussion of the fiscal year 2014, 2015 Defense Infrastructure Grant with Enterprise Florida, Inc., in the amount of $200,000 for Ongoing Base Buffering Initiative Approximate to NAS Whiting Field. Again, this is a program that's been in place for a number of years, has been extremely successful. Any discussion on this? If not, I will move it to Thursday without objection.
Here none it passes.
Item four, discussion of Florida Defense Support Task Force Grant in the amount of $20,654, requiring a local match of $20,654 for improvement of the car wash property outside of NAS Whiting Field main gate entrance, with matching funds from the U.S. Navy Repi Funds. Back up in your materials, any discussion on this? If not, I will move it to Thursday without objection.
Here none it passes.
And item five is discussion of implementation and development of the Whiting Aviation Park. Shannon, Oak Tree is going to present this. Good morning, Shannon.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me time to present information on the Whiting Aviation Park, and we'll jump right into it. The first question is, what is Whiting Aviation Park? The park is 269 acres, located in north Santa Rosa County. We have a limited access agreement with the U.S. Navy for the 6,000 linear foot runway, and it's a property that could increase base efficiency. And most importantly, it's a property that can protect 30% of our economy, and also responsible for 14,000 jobs and a $1.1 billion impact to our area alone, just Whiting Field alone. The next slide shows the location, like I said, just north of the city. Just a little bit of a background of the property. Back in 2001, we purchased 32 acres adjacent to the base for $150,000. Then we purchased the remaining portion of it through another Dig Defense Investment Grant in 2003. And the next slide shows where the purchases and the year and the dollar amount. The funding, over the past years, we've required funding for the master planning, which Atkins completed just three years ago, and also, just recently, we received a basically $130,000 grant to complete the security fencing around the park, between the park and the base. So far, the items completed for Whiting Aviation Park is the limited use agreement, the master plan, and also the entrance to the park, along with XL and DCL lanes, and, as I mentioned, the security fence. As proposed in the Atkins Master Plan, this is the airport layout plan for Whiting Aviation Park for the 270 acres. The portion in the lower left-hand corner, the dark brown, is basically 40 acres around a taxiway that companies could use. The lighter yellow surrounding the perimeter of the Marty Martin Way is used for companies not really needing aviation, or I mean, needing their runway access. The next slide kind of outlines the development phase. This is a big undertaking, 270 acres. The portion outlined in red is what we consider Phase One. Yellow is Phase Two. The teal is more of a Phase Three approach that we're looking at for the park. The capital improvement plan, as outlined in the master plan, is as defined, Phase One projects, Phase Two projects, and Phase Three. And Phase Two includes the stormwater retention and property along the taxiway, which includes the taxiway itself, and the apron space for aircraft. This is a possible Phase One development, as I meant, possible Phase One development, improvement of the taxiways, the establishment of the apron, along with the service road, hall roads, and utility development. However, before actual construction can begin, a pre-phase development needs to be completed, basically a site construction plans for the site, and it's estimated at a cost of $800,000 to $900,000 for the site plans for Phase One. For construction plans, this is the estimated cost for Phase One of the construction plans, around $14 million, and that was for the property outlined in red. So why? Why should we do this? Here's a artist's rendering of the park and what it can look like in the near future. When we go to trade shows and when we talk to aviation companies, there's a clear reason. The next slide kind of shows where The next slide kind of shows where major companies are located, and I think we all know that Airbus is located in Mobile, Boeing's up in the Carolinas, Gulfstream, Savannah, yeah Savannah, Embraer, and Embraer located down in Florida. So I think we have an advantage of being close to Airbus, but also being able to supply those four other locations. So if these companies, if we have a supplier locate here, what could be the potential impact? And over the next two slides, these are potential companies, or companies that we've seen just over the past six to nine months that are aviation leads that needed runway space or that was aviation-related. Project A and B, we're talking about a couple hundred jobs. Average wage for aviation industry jobs are around $50,000. Capital improvement, capital impact can be anywhere from 80 million to 20 million. But as you see, the impact is greatly over the course of eight years for Project A of 200 million, Project B over 100 million. And the same with the next slide, Project C and D, the same, over 100 jobs, the impact to the community is an extra spin-off of 40 or 50 additional jobs, and the impact of just jobs alone are 100, over $100 million. This does not even include construction jobs. These are just the ongoing effects of the company being in business in Santa Rosa County. Why should we invest? As I mentioned, aviation defense is a targeted industry for Northwest Florida, for Santa Rosa County. Our 30, one-third of our local economy is driven by the military, I think we should protect it, and the aviation jobs pay higher than average wage than other industries that we are going after. So the task items for getting this off the ground is funding for Phase One, our pre-phase development for the construction plans, and the construction, once that is completed, is acquiring funding for the Phase One construction.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
Good report. It's such an exciting area out there. This is, it's the kind of place, it seems like, once we get that first tenant in there, that could just serve as an incubator for the rest of the park, and I know that's the hurdle, is getting that first tenant in there because we have these infrastructure requirements that we're going to have to meet head-on.
Correct. Once we go out to that first tenant, we can, or the first tenant commits, we can go after EDA dollars, Economic Development Association dollars from the Department of Commerce, dollars from the state to help improve the infrastructure there, but it's getting to that point in the first place. The estimated timeline from going from, when a company commits to getting the funding and construction, you're talking maybe a 24 to 36-month timeframe. So if we want to begin and try to get a jump on it, it's getting that ball rolling now. And I know other areas of the state has gone after special appropriations to help study the land and provide construction plans, so that should be something I think we should look at.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cole?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Shannon, good presentation, a couple things on it. I want to make sure that when we look at this, as Atkins taken a look, you know, back when Commissioner Salter started this through the fence program, and thankful we were able to put that through, but it took years and years, as Atkins updated the viability of our capacity through the fence, and what I mean by that is, what are going to be the requirements for security of that? You know, we all know, you know, all security is heightened on all our military bases, so I want to make sure they've revisited that as far as what may have been required then and what may be required now. And then on the, of course, we're going to engage Johnson and Blanton, a few years back, the governor vetoed some funding that looked real good coming our way, so we need to engage with them again to try to get those dollars for the initial study, so, and make sure that study is, you know, ready to work, because behind that, you said there's $14 million in construction costs, so I don't want to get too far ahead of the construction availability costs with a study that'll sit on a shelf for years and not be able to be implemented, so.
I think maybe the ideal situation would be is to maybe go after appropriations for, I mean, a bunch of different scenarios, but for both pre-phase development and construction at the same time.
Okay. That'd be where I'd like to go with this, rather than see a study sit on a shelf. And again, and I've always felt this way, Peter Prince is an ideal incubator for Whiting Industrial. With all the retired military we have, both Air Force and Navy that have spent their life in the aviation world, I'd like to see maybe some small companies stood up at Peter Prince as an incubator and then move them to Whiting as that develops.
Thank you. And one of the items on our agenda later today is the legislative delegation and our legislative priorities. So this would be one avenue for us to pursue, as you mentioned, in appropriation, put the Whiting Field Aviation Industrial Park down as one of our priorities and specifically request appropriations for the study and then portions of Phase One construction.
Okay. Any other questions, comments from the board, members of the public? Come on up.
Good morning, Romi White, 5775 over on our lane. My question is for Mr. Andrews. Mr. Andrews, at a recent Republican Club meeting, Commissioner Salter brought up the idea of increasing the gas tax. Can you confirm or deny whether a supermajority would be needed, whether four or five votes, I mean, three or four votes would be needed for that?
Actually, the relevant statute, I think, which is 336.025, provides two different sections. One requires a majority vote, and one requires a majority vote plus one.
Okay. So the answer, I couldn't hear you too well, could you just like say how many votes would be needed to?
Well, a majority vote plus one is the maximum that would be required. There is one section that seems to require only a majority vote.
Okay. And also, that funding would need to be used for transportation projects. Commissioner Salter, could you tell us if that gas increase, gas tax increase that you're talking about, would this be a potential project, which you've got eyed for that?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure what this has to do with economic development, but...
That's what I was about to ask.
But, she asked a question, and I'll answer it. Most people know that we just recently found out that we've lost one of our state transportation grants called Scope, I think that's Small County Opportunity Outreach Program.
Small County Outreach Program.
And that, in the past, that's been several million dollars that we've been able to get through the state because we were still considered a portion of being a small county. And what I was talking about, as we prepare for our January workshop, we're going to have to find revenue to offset the loss of that grant. So if and when we have that discussion, and if we choose to look at the gas tax, it would be for transportation projects only.
Okay. And one of the reasons I'm asking is because I've brought this up before, the, we've mentioned that once we get the first tenant in there, we always talk about once we get the first tenant in there, to get the first tenant in there, it's going to require, from what I've been told, a one and a half million dollar upgrade to the substation at Whiting Field. So I know that, you know, we've asked for appropriations from the state legislature before, but have we discussed, are we going to discuss a plan for finding that funding so that the first tenant could actually move in there?
Yes, and I think that's part of what we're doing now, and we're going to continue having those discussions and trying to locate funding for both the engineering, design, and construction. All right. Nothing required on Thursday for this, we can take it up in our discussion of legislative priorities. Item six, on Thursday, we'll have an update from Enterprise Florida on their marketing efforts, and that concludes the economic development report.
Thank you, Commissioner Lynch. This time, we'll go into the Administrative Committee. First item is discussion of 2014-2015 appointments by Chairman Salter, we talked about that briefly. I'm going to go over those appointments very quickly. Obviously, the chairman is Commissioner Salter, vice chairman, Commissioner Lynchard. We will chair the Administrative Committee. Budget and Financial Management Committee will be Commissioner Rob Williamson, chairman, vice chairman, Bob Cole. Economic Development Committee, Commissioner Lane Lynchard, chairman, vice chairman, Commissioner J.A. Williamson. Public Services Committee, chairman is Commissioner J.A. Williamson. Vice chairman is Commissioner Lane Lynchard. Public Works Committee is Commissioner Bob Cole, chairman. Vice chairman is Commissioner Rob Williamson. Lengthy list of external appointments, I'll go through those very quickly. Bay Area Resource Council, Commissioner J.A. Williamson and Commissioner Bob Cole, representing us. Commission on Oil Spill Response Coordination, Commissioner Lane Lynchard. Defense Support Initiative Committee, Commissioner Salter. Florida Association of Counties Trust, that's the fact, Commissioner Lane Lynchard. Gulf Sordium Council, Commissioner Lane Lynchard is our lead person on it. Alternate is Commissioner Rob Williamson. Juvenile Justice, Circuit Advisory Board will be Commissioner Lane Lynchard. Juvenile Justice of Santa Rosa County, also known as Family Law Agency Group, be Commissioner J.A. Williamson. Local Emergency Food and Shelter Program will be Commissioner Bob Cole. Local Mitigation Strategy Steering Committee will be Commissioner Rob Williamson. National Association of Counties will be Commissioner Bob Cole. Northwest Florida Regional Transportation Planning Organization will be Commissioner Williamson, Commissioner Salter, Commissioner Lynchard. Florida Alabama Transportation Planning Organization, our TPO, that'll be all of us, Commissioner Williamson, Commissioner Cole, Commissioner Salter, Commissioner Rob Williamson, Commissioner Lane Lynchard. Public Safety Coordinating Council will be Commissioner Salter. Regional Transportation Authority will be Commissioner Rob Williamson, Commissioner Don Salter, Commissioner Lane Lynchard. Regional Utility Authority will be Commissioner Lane Lynchard, Commissioner J.A. Williamson. Restore Council will be Commissioner Don Salter, Commissioner Lane Lynchard. Santa Rosa Communication Task Force, our ICP, that'll be Commissioner Salter. Santa Rosa County Fair Committee will be Commissioner Bob Cole. Small County Coalition will be Commissioner J.A. Williamson and Commissioner Bob Cole. Santa Rosa County Tourist Development Council, that'll be Commissioner Rob Williamson as the chair, alternate will be Commissioner J.A. Williamson. Transportation Disadvantaged Coordinator will be Commissioner Rob Williamson. Tri-County Communication Council, the Board of Portee will be Hunter Walker. West Florida Regional Planning Council, that'd be Commissioner Bob Cole. Santa Rosa County Law Library Committee, that'd be Commissioner Rob Williamson. Blackwater River State Forest Management Plan Advisory Group Study Plan, that'd be Commissioner Salter. Any questions or comments on these appointments?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lynch.
Just one point of clarification, the Commission on Oil Spill Response Coordination has completed its work, so that, yeah, so that one will no longer be needed.
Which one was that, Commissioner Lynch?
The Commission on Oil Spill Response Coordination.
We'll acknowledge that one will be deleted. Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cole.
Are we going to continue a remaining affiliate of the Small County Coalition due to our population now?
Small County Coalition's always is included, the county, I can verify that, but we've already notified them of the appointees and all. In other words, I don't think they, this is not like the state legislation that has mandatory cutoffs, I mean, it's almost the smaller to the mid-county caucus, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
There are several comparatively sized counties that also are members.
Chris Gillen does a great job for us, too, so.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none, I will move these to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number two, discussion of letter to Florida Office of the Attorney General for continuation of Crime Stoppers Trust Fund Grant Funding for Santa Rosa County Crime Stoppers Incorporated, Pursuit to Applicable Florida Statutes, Commissioner, I mean, Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet is information from Deborah Roach, who serves as the chairman of the Crime Stoppers of Santa Rosa County Committee, and the county's had a recognized Crime Stoppers program since 1998. As you look in the backup material, it appears that the Attorney General's office is just asking for a letter confirming that the, this organization is, represents the county. I think Commissioner Lynchard had served on this board before, I believe, it actually started in 98 with Mr. J.C. Williams and a number of other people. There's no local funding for this, I mean, there's no county tax money that goes into this, and they handle all their transactions outside of us. Ms. Roach is here to answer any questions, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Name and address, please. I was wondering if you was going to bring the sheriff with you.
Deborah Roach, 510 James River Road, Gulf Breeze, Florida, 32561.
Deputy Rachel Lloyd, Santa Rosa County Sheriff's Office, Milton, Florida.
Sheriff, one in the hall.
Thank you, gentlemen. The Office of the Attorney General is requiring that the Santa Rosa County Crime Stoppers acquire a letter from our county commissioners, authorizing the continuation of our grant funding from the state. As you may know, Santa Rosa Crime Stoppers received the first approval for the county to establish our grant program and begin the grant funding in 1998. In that approval, the county commission allows the county clerk to collect a fine from the criminals convicted in our county and deposits the fund into the state coffers designated for the Crime Stoppers funding. Each county then receives the money collected by their county minus the county and state administrative fees for approximately 8%, and is administered by the Office of the Attorney General to fund and operate the local Crime Stoppers program. The National Crime Stoppers Group has been organized as a law enforcement tool for over 30 years, and Santa Rosa's program has been in operation for more than 15 years. In 1996, the funding, as a little background history, in 1996, the founding members of the Florida Association of Crime Stoppers, with 19 programs at that time, saw a need for a more stable funding in order to expand the model, and they presented this to the state as a Crime Stoppers Trust Fund. A committee of seasoned Crime Stoppers veterans set out to present and advocate for this cause in 1997 and established the Florida State Statute 16.555, the Crime Stoppers Trust Fund, for this reason. There are no state, county, or local taxes that go to fund the Crime Stoppers program. It is completely and totally paid for by the criminal in the judgmental fines that are assessed. The Crime Stoppers in our county is a civilian-based Board of Directors and is made up entirely of volunteers from the community. The Board of Directors works closely with the law enforcement agencies and media to oversee the program's dissemination of the tip information, public education and involvement, and the publication and advertisement of the program, as well as the financial direction. The Board of Directors holds monthly meetings that are open to the public to discuss and decide the award amounts for each case that has been completed during the month. Crime Stoppers is based on the principle that someone in the community besides the criminals have information that can solve a crime and was created to combat the major problems faced by law enforcement in generating that information, the fear of reprisal, an attitude of apathy among the public, and the reluctance to get involved. Crime Stoppers solves these problems by offering anonymity to the people who provide that information, paying rewards when the information provided leads to an arrest, and bringing together the law enforcement media and the community to solve the crimes. We are directly sponsored by the Santa Rosa County Sheriff's Office and with additional sponsors of the Gulf Breeze Police Department, the Milton Police Department, Whiting Field Police Department, Pensacola State College PD, and also the Florida Highway Patrol, and we thank them for that support. So in that, we're asking that the county commissioners, please, give us a continuation letter of agreement that we... letter of agreement that we, the Crime Stoppers Association of Santa Rosa County, Inc., can continue to collect our grant funding and provide this, be able to provide this tool to our local law enforcement agencies. Thank you.
Sheriff Hall.
I'm sure, good morning, commissioners, by the way. I'm sure this is sort of a no-brainer for you guys because it's a win-win for us. It's very beneficial to us at the Sheriff's Office and all law enforcement entities in the county. We solve numerous crimes as a result of Crime Stoppers. When someone can call in, they don't have to give their name, they don't have to give anything, but they give us valuable information. Plus, in some cases, some of them make, they make a good little chunk of change for doing it. So, but I'm sure y'all will go along with this because it doesn't cost the local taxpayers any. But I would like to say thanks to Commissioner Lynchard for serving on the board in the past. He's not there in the past because it is, he's not there presently, but it is made up of volunteers. And of course, Deborah does a wonderful job as chairperson, and it's very valuable to us. So thank you for your support because I definitely feel that you will support this. Thank you.
Any comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lynchard.
Just a word of recognition for everyone involved on the Crime Stoppers Board. And Deborah, you put a lot of time into this, and everybody associated with Crime Stoppers appreciates it, and everybody else in Santa Rosa County should as well. I know you've got a lot going on, and you do invest a lot of time in this and have for some time, so we appreciate it. Doing a great job.
Very much.
Just before we finish, I just, I forgot to tell you, this year, we have solved over 30 major crimes. We receive approximately 600 tips a year on those crimes. We've cleared 45 cases this year and have approved rewards of over $6,000. And within the state, our drug seizure has been $11,134, and our property recovery has been almost $3 million this year of the Crime Stoppers organizations in Florida.
Anything else? Here again, like the sheriff said, I think you have full support, but we'll move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
Moving on to number three, discussion of community partnership agreement with Troy University regarding tuition discounts for county employees.
Mr. Chairman, in your packet is the information on that particular partnership, and Troy University is offering to waive application fee and up to, and provide a 10% discount to our employees through its community partnership program. And it really does help, as in the past, the board has, had, had back during more favorable economic times, we had had a tuition assistance program that was modeled after, had it, was modeled after kind of corporate model, and we would, would help people as employees as they, as they went through their higher education. And we found that to be extremely beneficial as employees that have improved themselves. And we appreciate Troy participating in this and, and, and offering that to our employees.
Do we have a representative from Troy?
I believe there are a couple that are here.
Come forward, give us your name and address, please.
Hi, good morning. My name is Rick Puckett. I'm the area coordinator for Troy University, and the address is 21 New Oronton Road, Pensacola, Florida, 32506.
Anyone have any questions? We appreciate you being here, and I think obviously we'll support it fully, and go Trojans.
Well, go Trojans, and we thank you for the past support of Troy University. Have some great graduates here, Sheriff Wendell Hall, Commissioner Salter. Appreciate all the great students we've had in the past, and the Chancellor Hawkins wanted to extend this community partnership as part of a spirit of continuing education for employees of municipalities and cities across our region of influence of South Alabama and Northwest Florida. We always have offered a in-state tuition, but this then extends it further for county employees, so wanted to thank you for that support.
Thank you for being here, and thank you for offering this program to our employees.
Thank you.
Recommend moving this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number four, is Mr. Brown here yet, Hunter? He is?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Discussion of proposed National Park Service standardized entrance fees and related impacts on Gulf Islands National Seashore. It's my understanding we have Superintendent Dan Brown with us.
He is.
Now, recognizing.
And in your packet is, is the, really the press release, if you will, from the seashore outlining the program, and Superintendent Brown wanted to be here to speak to any questions, whatever the board would have.
Thank you for having me here this morning, and I appreciate the opportunity to address the board. The National Park Service is moving to standardize its entrance fees at all national parks nationwide. If you travel around the country to various different national parks, you would find that parks that are similar, similar in size and type, have very differing entrance fees. There's really no rhyme or reason to it. The National Park Service engaged in some economic studies, and the result of that was they came out with a four-tiered grouping of parks to standardize entrance fees at similar size and types of parks nationwide. The largest national parks, like Yellowstone and Grand Canyon, are in group four. The smallest national park areas, typically historic sites, Fort Sumter is a good example, are in group one. Gulf Islands and other national seashores have been placed in group two, and we've been asked to begin the process to eventually arrive in those standardized groupings. And when we sat down and looked at where our entrance fee structure was for Gulf Islands, we're pretty well below even the group one rates. Parks are, because individual parks have different local situations and circumstances, we are given some latitude for phasing in fees over time. And so we have, in our initial proposal that we put out for public comment, decided to propose going to group one fees, and at some point in the future, consider, again, going out to the public to eventually end up in the group two fees. The process that we have to follow is a five-step process. The first step is to develop a proposal. We do that internally with our management team. The next thing we do is go out to the public. We distribute that proposal via the media, elected officials, other agencies, as widely as we can. And at the close of the public comment period, and our public comment period for this occasion, we've extended for six weeks to accommodate the holidays that it encompass Thanksgiving and Christmas. It'll close on January 2nd. The third step is to analyze those comments and then make any necessary changes to our initial proposal based on those comments. We take those comments very seriously, and they do impact any decisions for, or recommendations for moving forward. The fourth step is then to forward not only our eventual recommendation, but all of those public comments as well, to our National Park Service Regional Office, and they then review it, all of the comments and our recommendation, prior to finally forwarding it to the Washington Office. So we're at the very early stage. We've developed an initial proposal, and we're in that public comment period now. Besides the entrance fee structure, we're also allowed to consider other changes to our fee program, and there are several areas within the National Seashore that we have not charged entrance fees, and two that we, in our initial proposal, have included to incorporate entrance fees, is our Okaloosa area, over east of Fort Walton Beach, Okaloosa Island, and Fort Barancas on Naval Air Station Pensacola. Some of the other changes that we have looked at, we have what's called a night owl pass, which gives fishermen 24/7 access to the National Seashore. They're first required to purchase an annual park pass and then purchase a subsequent night owl pass. The total cost is about $55, and that gives them 24/7 access. And we've proposed something different, extending the hours of operation for the park into the evening to 10 o'clock at night to accommodate some of that, that need and those uses, and then eliminate the night owl pass so that people don't have to purchase an additional, an additional pass. And then the last thing that we put in the initial proposal actually was kind of an afterthought. It was not one of the things we initially talked about, and it turns out it's been the most controversial, and that was to move where we collect our entrance fees in the Santa Rosa area where Opal Beach is located. We charge at the, at the beach location now. And we proposed to move that to the boundaries on J. Earl Bowden Way, Highway 399. And the reason we, how we got to that point, we have some very serious shorebird roadkill issues on the highway during nesting season. Every year, we lose as many as 150 birds, both adults and chicks, to roadkill. Last year, we even lost an adult sea turtle that was struck and killed on the highway. And the cause of that typically is excessive speed. And so we've tried a number of things. We've lowered the speed limit to a painfully slow 20 miles per hour in the nesting, specific nesting zones. We've installed speed humps. We've done additional enforcement to the extent that our limited staffing would allow, and it's still not had the desired effect that it needs to. And we've received intensive pressure from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to do more. Recently, the Assistant Regional Director for the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service came down to meet with us to review what we have, what steps we've taken, and to strongly recommend that we consider additional measures. One of the thoughts that we had, we have some university researchers evaluating the roadkill issue, and one of the things we've learned is that at Fort Pickens, we have very little problems, certainly much less. And the reason for that is that every single driver is contacted at the entrance station and provided with information about the birds and the nesting areas and the reasons for the slower speeds. And so we get far greater compliance there. And so we thought that if we were able to do something similar and contact drivers on J. Earl Bowden Way, Highway 399, that we would also be able to get better compliance. Even with our limited staffing last year, we wrote over 200 citations, and most of those were for people going 25, 30 miles an hour or more over the speed limit. So we have been considering putting booths on the road at both boundaries and staffing it during the nesting season with volunteers to provide the same information to drivers so they can be on the lookout for the tiny little chicks adhering to the slower speed limits in those nesting areas. And following that discussion, the National Park Service came out with this standardizing of fees. And so the suggestion was made, well, if we're going to consider putting up booths on the road, maybe we could move where we collect entrance fees. We did include that in our initial proposal. Looking at the comments that have come in to date, I think it's fair to say that that was probably not a good idea, and I do regret putting it in there. Officially, procedurally, we have to wait until the public comment period ends and evaluate the comments, but I think it is fair to say that based on the comments we've received to date, that that component of the proposal will be removed and receive no further consideration as we move forward. The money that we receive for entrance fees is retained largely by the park. 80% of it is retained by the park. The law that allows us to charge and collect entrance fees does not allow us to use that for recurring operational expenses. We can't use it to hire staff, to clean bathrooms and mow grass, and hire additional rangers. It's used only for capital improvements, to replace aging dated facilities that either needs significant rehabilitation or just flat out need to be replaced. And many of our facilities, we inherited from the State Park era, and they're more than 60 years old and are exceedingly dilapidated. And the only revenue stream we have are these entrance fees, and that's what Congress intended them to be, to be used for, and that is how, how we use them. So they do serve the public in that way and are required by law to be used only for those visitor facilities that directly serve the visitors. The group one rates, let me say first that the entrance fees typically fall into two categories. For those who visit the park on a recurring basis, typically those who live locally and come more than once or twice a year, most, most of those folks get an annual park pass. Currently, it's $25 for an annual park pass, and it allows unlimited access for an entire year to any of the National Seashore areas, Fort Pickens, Johnson Beach, Opal Beach, et cetera. The group one rate would raise that annual park pass to $30, so it would increase it by $5 for the entire year. We also have in entrance fees a per-vehicle pass, and as, it's common with all national parks, that per-vehicle pass is, is good for seven days, and it's targeted really for those who are on vacation and are spending several days or up to a week or more in a park. And it, again, allows unlimited access, coming and going for a seven-day period, to any of the areas within Gulf Islands. And there, there is more of an increase for that from what we're currently charging. Currently, our per-vehicle rate is $8, and the group one per-vehicle rate is $15, so it's almost, almost double. And I have been asked by the media, would that impact people being able to come to the park? And typically, for those who are coming on vacation and spending a week, the budget that they have for their vacation, $15 is a very small percentage of their vacation budget. For those who live locally, again, most of those folks do get the annual pass, or they take advantage of the many free days or free passes that we have. We have a number of simply free days where anyone can come to any area of the National Seashore free of charge, and there are a number of passes that are issued to different groupings or categories of people. If you're active-duty military, you can get a free pass that allows unlimited entrance to not only Gulf Islands National Seashore, but any national park across the country that would have to be renewed annually. If you're a senior, 62 years of age or older, you can get a senior pass, and that's also grants unlimited access and 50% off of camping fees. If you're handicapped, you can get an access pass. If you volunteer out at the seashore a certain number of hours, you can also get a free volunteer pass that's good not only for Gulf Islands National Seashore, for unlimited free access for a year, but to all other national parks in the country. So there are many avenues for people with more limited resources to still be able to enjoy their national park and, and National Seashore at Gulf Islands. Do you have any questions for us?
First of all, we appreciate you being here and providing that information with us, and I'm glad to hear that you're listening to the public, and probably not going to be a good idea, but any other discussion about it, Commissioner, Commissioner Cole?
Mr. Chairman, when I first read this, is the reason I asked Mr. Walker to put it on the agenda, because of the cost of tolling 399, I just didn't feel that was fair to, so many citizens use that. It's a road, it's been a road for years. I agree that, you know, our national parks are important, are one of the jewels of our country, but, and we all know the cost of doing business continues to rise, so I don't have a problem with, you know, going up. I feel like perhaps our National Seashore shouldn't go up to group two. I think group one would be sufficient for the facilities that we have out there. When you equate those to some of the facilities, perhaps at Fort Pickens, where you have a store, you have basically more facilities that are available at our, the National Seashore between the two counties. So I'd kind of be a little opposed to going up to group two. I could agree with group one, but I certainly, and I'm glad you realize that, I could not ever respond, or respond positively to tolling 399. That just, how we get the message out, perhaps, you know, some sort of message boards, some education to folks on, you know, the loss of, you know, any endangered species, but I just don't see how tolling would, would do that, because, you know, slowing down certainly, but, you know, you have inclement weather, you have different reasons, so appreciate your presentation, appreciate, appreciate you being here this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. In making decisions at the National Seashore, we have a management team, we have program area chiefs for facilities and resources and law enforcement. We have program area chiefs for facilities and resources and law enforcement and education and administration. And we generally make decisions collectively and collaboratively, trying to reach consensus. As the superintendent, I'm ultimately held accountable and responsible, and so it does fall on me. And I do have the authority to make unilateral decisions, but I rarely do that. I prefer to try to gain consensus. And this one was really interesting. As we met as a management team, I found myself the lone person along with our five division chiefs and my deputy superintendent, chief of operations, all of whom were proposing what we ended up putting forth. And my job is to be sensitive to community needs and elected officials and other agencies and so forth, and I had some hesitancy. But knowing the process and knowing that once we heard from the public, it would, we could implement changes based on those public comments, I did allow what our management team as a whole proposed to go forward, knowing that it could be changed once we heard from the public.
Commissioner Litchard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Superintendent Brown, thank you for coming up this morning and discussing this. You're the custodian of a real jewel here along the Emerald Coast. A lot of people don't realize just how big the national seashore is. It's not just our little area in Fort Pickens, Opal Beach. We're passholders. I was out at the first parking lot at Fort Pickens yesterday with a bunch of Weebleau Scouts. So, if you heard reports of loud noise and obnoxious behavior, I can give you a list of names. The, my primary concern initially was the tolling of the bridge as it was reported, or tolling of the beach, I'm sorry, as it was reported between Pensacola Beach and Navarre Beach. I understand the need to protect the shorebirds and the important habitat that that is. We enjoy Opal Beach. It's normally very quiet out there. Not a lot of people make that trek down, and it's a gorgeous part of the seashore. It's normally not staffed. It seems that maybe if more staffing was done at the gate there, that would increase revenue some. I think my wife sent you an email to that effect when the public comment period opened up. One question I have concerns, the night owl passes. And I know you've referenced that you've had some problems there before at night, and it's a law enforcement issue. Has any consideration been given to grandfathering in those fishermen who have existing night owl passes, that's a part of their outdoor experiences, floundering or fishing at night along the seashore? Would that be something that you could consider?
Those that currently hold passes, those would be honored for the annual life of the pass. The way the process unfolds, once the public comment period ends and we forward our final recommendation to the regional office, and then it makes it to the Washington office, we're probably looking at sometime in the late spring, maybe May, before any proposal would be implemented or any recommendation would be implemented. So, that would kind of be our implementation date, and we would certainly honor all existing passes.
Do you know about how many night owl passes are out there right now?
I really don't. I really don't. We really discuss that at length because we know that fishermen are very passionate, very ardent, and love what they do. And we know that there are elements of night fishing that can't be accomplished during the daytime, and we understand that. My chief ranger asked that I choose my words carefully, but in all honesty, we simply do not have the staff to provide 24/7 coverage of the national seashore. And to, the night owl pass and allowing people to come in 24 hours a day in the wee hours of the morning is somewhat similar to opening the doors of your home to people you don't know and then leaving, because that's essentially what happens out of the national seashore. And we have continuing problems with vandalism and drunken disorderly and fights and things like that. And that's what happens when an area is left unstaffed.
Thank you.
Any other comments, Commissioner J. Earl Williamson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Superintendent Brown, thank you very much for the informative presentation. What I wanted to, and probably mainly for the commissioners from District Four and Five, and whenever I say Commissioner Williamson, I'm talking to the other commissioner because I don't talk to myself, except when I'm at home. Sometimes I think I talk to myself. But it affects you more than anybody as far as commissioners, but I feel since there is a public comment going on now, with the board, could we have a letter drafted? You know, it sounds like we have clear opposition of the tolling between Escambia and Santa Rosa County. I would oppose it. I know that it's, you say you feel that it's something you won't go further with, but still, that's just a feeling. But while there is public comment, can we have a letter drafted on behalf of our board that we oppose this? And just wanted to hear from commissioners from District Four and Five on that. Thank you.
I think it'd certainly be appropriate and well-received if we expressed our opinion on tolling of that road. It is, it's heavily traveled. I don't know how it would be handled on a Blue Angels weekend. We'd have, you know...
Probably put the gate up. But I don't think that's going to happen. We did receive something similar from Commissioner Grover Robinson, Escambia County. He simply did it by email, and that's the way many of our comments come in. He understood the need to take a look at our entrance fees and the rate structure, so he was not critical of that. But he also was opposed to moving entrance stations out onto Highway 399.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Cole and Commissioner Rob Williamson.
Thank you. And that's where I was going to go with this, is ask us to put together a letter so you have it on file. But another thing, and I wish they were still here, our tourist development council, not only at the national seashore, but we have shorebirds that we like to protect. I'm sure Escambia County has that. These are all our resources as American citizens. I'd like to suggest that our TDCs work together, and as we're developing new brochures to put out, that perhaps a paragraph be put in there about the protecting shorebirds, protecting the sea turtles, and relating to that. And then as our tourists and guests come out here, and they would see that in this brochure. So, just something I'd like to throw out there.
I do have a meeting set up with Julie Morgan to talk about a variety of tourism-related issues, and I'm sure that's one topic we'll talk about.
District Four?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Just thanks, Superintendent Brown, for coming here today and for not making a unilateral decision, but following the process and then, as the process did what it was supposed to do, you receive public comment and you adjust accordingly. I was encouraged to see your email come through earlier this morning where you said basically, you know, you've received that public comment, and I'm paraphrasing now, but that you don't envision that that would come up in the future as far as putting the tolls up. And I know that all, it makes me happy as well as a lot of thousands of other visitors to the seashore. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, it's a little premature for me to comment on it without having had the opportunity to meet with Superintendent Brown. We've tried to connect, and our schedules haven't worked out, but we will have a meeting together and try to look for ways to improve protecting the shorebirds, to make sure that people are notified and we communicate better as they enter the national seashore and try to be a better partner with you. Thanks.
Superintendent Brown, I know we have at least one gentleman from the public to speak. If you'll just kind of have a seat and see if you have any questions for you.
Thank you.
We'll open it up to the public. Name and address, please.
Don Richards, 1129 Park Lane, Gulf Breeze. Just wanted to say thank you so much, Dan. Superintendent Brown has been a tremendous asset to the park since he has joined us. He has instituted some programs there to restore us back to a level that we haven't seen in a lot of the facilities that are there. He's been a really good asset. I'm also extremely pleased to hear that you are opposed to the toll for Earl Bowden Parkway. I'm sure Mr. Bowden would be very opposed to that as well. That is a very big asset that we have, and protecting the shorebirds and things, you can go to any extent you need to to protect the birds because a lot of people are not aware of that. The ones of us that have grown up around here have seen those since I remember chasing them as a little kid out there, and everybody's saying, "Don't do that, don't do that, you're going to hurt them." But those are a unique asset to this area along the Gulf Coast. And I think that we do need to take extra care to protect them during their nesting season. As far as the rates that increase for the entrance fees, that's great. I hope that it doesn't get to the point that we have to tax the people that come up and anchor along the shoreline there, because I take all of my kids up to Fort Pickens all the time. The grandkids that come in, that's their favorite place. There's some neat reefs out there all around that. It's very shallow. It's a great place to teach kids to snorkel and appreciate the assets that we have around here. So, keep doing a good job, just don't put a toll up down 399.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else? Name and address, please.
Good morning. Ken Rutzke, 6580 Federal Street in Navarre. And I don't want to repeat what has been said. I think the feelings are here that the toll was a bad idea, but I'm, after 25, more than 25 years doing business on Navarre Beach, I simply wanted to add that that connection between the two beach communities, Navarre Beach and Pensacola Beach, is so important to both counties' economies, we can't put a de facto toll road there. That section of seashore is not a, completely a destination as Fort Pickens would be. It is a, one of only two northeast corridors, northwest corridor, east-west corridor, I'll get it. There are only two roads for people, and I would suggest that the vast majority of the people that transit 399 on the island are commuting. It's a beautiful ride. I drive through there just for the beauty of it. But people are actually using it as one of our major and important thoroughfares. And I don't think, you know, a toll road is the way to go. That's, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Come forward.
Tim Cohane, 1466 Homeport Drive, Navarre Beach, Florida. And gentlemen, I will not take up a lot of time. This is just for the record. I'm also president of the Navarre Beach Leaseholders and Renters Association, and I just wanted to be on record that we also oppose the toll for all of the reasons that you gentlemen state. Thank you.
I think we all agree it's kind of a unique challenge for the Superintendent Brown and the Park Service that we all want to protect a park, but 399 is not just a road that goes into a park, it's a connector road. With that said, I'm going to move to Thursday's agenda, directing staff to prepare a letter of opposition to this request. Without objection? Hearing none, it passes. Another favorite topic, number five, discussion of proposed increase in tolls for usage of Garson Point Bridge. Mr. Walker.
Mr. Chairman, I had several of the commissioners ask this be placed on the agenda. In your backup, you see the, place the letter to Mr. Lamb, who serves as the chairman of the Bridge Authority, from the trustee regarding the increase in the tolls. I did include the traffic study that was appended to the report and to give everybody, you know, have some kind of background of that. I know that Commissioner Lynchard has met and Representative Broxton has been involved in this. That's the information that we've provided.
Comments by the board? Commissioner Lynchard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've said it many times before, but I don't think we can say it enough. This board really doesn't have anything to do with Garson Point Bridge, other than appointing three members to the Bridge Authority. My understanding is, actually, I saw the letter from Chairman Lamb, he resigned from that authority last week, so currently, there are no appointed members of the authority.
That's correct. He was a governor's appointee. Yeah, the District Three Secretary of DOT serves ex officio, and he's the only extant member at this time.
So, we do have three open positions on that authority. Since all of this has come out in the last couple of weeks, I've received a number of inquiries from people who have indicated a willingness to serve on that board. So, perhaps in January, we'll be able to make a few appointments to that board. But the, there are requirements in the bond documents that the trustee has to complete before they can raise the toll. Once they make that determination, though, the authority itself doesn't have the ability or the power to push back against that toll increase. Neither does the FDOT. So, the bond documents and the trustee really drive the process. That being said, I think it would be important for us as a board nonetheless to come out and, you know, make our thoughts be known on an increase of this magnitude, you know, going from 375 per trip to $5 per trip. That's a 33% increase. We had a meeting, Representative Doug Broxton put together a meeting last Monday in the city of Gulf Breeze with some interested parties. One local business owner in my district, whose business is two miles east of the bridge, does a lot of work in both the north end and the south end of the county, did the calculations, and this increase will cost his business $2,400 a year in additional tolls, $200 a month additionally to drive across the Garson Point Bridge. So, it's not just a matter of taxing the tourists who are unsuspecting and get off the wrong exit on Interstate 10 when they're trying to get to Pensacola Beach or Navarre Beach. This is going to hit our residents and our local business owners in their pocketbook because it is a significant increase. It's already the most expensive bridge in the state. Now, they're looking at increasing it by another 33%. So, I would ask that the board direct staff to draft a letter pointing out the burden that this is going to place on our residents and local businesses, not just the toll increase, but reducing the, actually, cutting in half the discount that is available to frequent users of the bridge, going from a 50% discount to a 25% discount for people who use the business, or use the bridge frequently. You know, if they're driving to work every day over Garson Point Bridge, you're going to, your savings are going to be cut in half if this is passed. So, I don't know how successful we can be in pushing back against this, but it's something that we definitely have to try.
Commissioner Lynchard, I would ask you to keep that thought and let's open it up for public comments. Yes, ma'am? Name and address, please.
Nancy Forrester, 6825 Tidewater Drive in Navarre. And I'd just like to add my voice to the opposition. I'm glad to hear that you're going to write a letter as a committee, but I'm also wondering if there's, if you think that there would be any good in, say, a letter-writing campaign, any type of, could we do some type of a petition online that we could get signatures? This is really going to be a hardship against the people that live here the most. I personally volunteer for a wildlife refuge. I live in Navarre, and I've often had to drive to pace to pick up some injured animals. I like to go the bridge, but if it's $5, I just can't afford to do that, just as a volunteer. I understand there's supposed to be some type of study done, but I personally kind of question the validity of the study, if you're kind of studying what's being done right now. I know you have communication with them, and I would wonder if we could ask them for a potential study of maybe doing something like, say, for three months, try a $2 or a $2.50, or $2.50 toll. I think that's actually would increase the volume of people there and would therefore increase the money they're going to get. I personally will not drive it if it's $5 a trip. There's shopping that I can go to, I can, there's other things. I do come to the north part, and that's handy, but I'm not going to pay a $10. I do come to the north part, and that's handy, but I, I'm not gonna pay a $10 round trip on it. And I, I know, I've heard and know people that, that also will not travel it if it's $5. So, do you think there would be any, any good in, in having a letter campaign or a petition drive or something that, to oppose that?
I would strongly encourage you to work closely with Representative Broxton. I think he's taking the lead on this. I would ask him that same question, sometimes letter writing and, and emails, they help you obviously express your ideas, so I would work closely with Representative Broxton.
Okay. All right. We'll try that. Thank you. Yeah, we, there's many of us that definitely oppose that. I am sure you all know that. Thank you.
Include my son.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Earl Dean, 7456 Woodmont Street, Navarre, Florida. We're opposed to having the toll raised as well. I know that Mr. Cole and Lynchard and now Mr. Williamson, they're all, all in the area, and they are aware that we have deep concerns about raising those tolls. When we have Pensacola Bridge, Bay Bridge, with more people coming across it than, and it's free, so we need to keep that price down if we can. Don't, do all you can to not raise the price on that bridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Mr. Don Richards, 1129 Park Lane, again. As president of United Peninsula, I can tell you that my email lights up when there's issues that, that affect the, the peninsula. Commissioner Lynchard and I speak almost weekly on that. In this case, Representative Broxton and I have been speaking for months. I served on the Santa Rosa Bay Bridge Authority and resigned because I would get up and leave the meeting every time a toll increase discussion came up, because there was only five people there, and there was five people, needed to be a quarrel. So, the easiest way to make sure that no toll got increased was to get up and leave the meeting. And then, I started getting little ugly emails from people that were bondholders or representing bondholders. And that's not the way to go. A lot of the studies that have been done have been done by people in New York, New Jersey, and Baltimore. And let me tell you what, there's a hell of a lot more people up there going across those bridges that make six-figure income and they're going to those jobs than there are down here. It's just not the case. The commission, and you know how much I respect every one of them, you can't stay on the sidelines anymore. We need a proclamation from you guys to say that enough is enough, and it's not going to affect our economic development and individual people's lives. Let me just give you an example. Take the case of a person that goes across the bridge every day to go to work, and there's a lot of them, south-enders that work in the north, north-enders that work in the south. And I can name names, because I know a ton of them, that go to Whiteing Field and that live up in the north end and come to the south end. Just doing their round trip, five days a week, we're talking about $12 a week, $12.50 increase that they're gonna realize with their discounts being changed and the rate going up to $4 for a Sunpass holder. Then you take and multiply that out over the year, that's almost $600 that you're gonna take out of their pockets for doing that. There's a lot of businesses, just like Commissioner Lynchard spoke about, that have to go back and forth all the time. They're saying, "We can't do that. We can't do it anymore. It's gonna run us out of business to do that." And we need you, as a voice of governmental authority, to say, "Enough is enough. We can't do this." Not down here. We can't go to $5 down here. We could do that in Washington, we could do that in New York and New Jersey, can't do that here. And the loophole that I hope Representative Broxton has found is that they haven't done a real traffic study. If you look at some of the quotes that have been provided, and, and our county attorney served as the board attorney or the authority attorney for, since inception, and he should be able to tell us some of the things that they haven't done in order to provide that increase legitimately. And I'm hoping that we can get leverage with the trustees, and there are several trustees. Bank of Mellon has been the one, and they represent a majority of them, but there's a couple of other attorneys that represent other bond interests. And somehow, we have to get together here with you guys leading it. It's in our backyards, and it's gonna affect our taxpayers. And we need you to come up with some ideas of ways that we can positively affect this, and just like the lady indicated, our studies locally, asking people, "How much would you pay and go across that bridge regularly?" Two, $2.50 is the number that keeps coming up. I think the traffic would more than double, and they would offset their losses if they would go to a two or $2.50 toll. But we need something formal from you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Don. Yes, yes, ma'am?
Josie Cotty, 216 Florida Avenue, Gulf Breeze, Florida. I'm kind of the changing of the guard. I am possibly future president of Yupa. And I'd like to say that we need to think of it from a future point of view, because many of the people that were at the meeting that Mr. Lynchard was at and Representative Broxton held said they won't use the bridge if it goes up to $5. Well, that's great. That's, we need to do that. But the problem that we have is, the reality is, in 217, we have a bridge that's gonna get construction done on it at Pensacola Bay Bridge. And if you have all that traffic that is saying it's not gonna use the Garson Point Bridge, and all of a sudden we have all this traffic that's obviously gonna have traffic delays in the middle of Gulf Breeze, we need to think about that, because that is gonna be a tragic reality for the businesses that go along and are part of Santa Rosa County. And we have to think of it from that point of view. We cannot have people not using the Garson Point Bridge, but they will not, and they should not, use it at $5.
Thank you. And I'll just say this, a lot of the commissioners who have been commissioners for quite some time, we've worked on this for many, many years. I know a few years ago, we thought we had it turned over to the State Toll Pike Authority. That didn't work. We don't know what the solution's gonna be, but we hear you loud and clear, and we're gonna engage. We have engaged in the past. So, Commissioner Lynchard, if you'd like to make your recommendation again?
Commissioner, I would.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I just wanted to echo Commissioner Lynchard's sentiment a little bit. I mean, I have five to eight trucks on the road daily, service trucks with electrical business, and I try my best to schedule things, we don't use the bridge now at 375, and, and at $5, we, we will not use it again. And I know there's a lot of people out there in that community. This is an important issue. I, I think that we definitely need to have a clear stance of what we think. The best thing that could ever happen is them drop it to $2, but, I mean, that's, they know a lot more than us, or they think they do with the traffic studies and things, and that's probably not gonna happen. But, I mean, that would be the best thing that could ever happen to that bridge, is dropping it to $2. Probably never gonna happen, but I do think we need a clear stance as a board that, that we're opposed to this, and, and to be a little more active. And I'll, and I'll take, you know, as me as a commissioner, I have kind of sat on the sidelines with this the last few weeks, and we'll try to do more to actively and aggressively oppose it.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Cole?
Thank you. District Two's kind of a unique district in Santa Rosa County because it actually touches every, every other district. And this bridge is the connection between District Two and District Five. And years ago, when they raised it the first time, I, I attended one of these meetings, and the news media was nice enough to cover that, and I told them, I said, "We need to, if you lower the rates, you'll build toll booths. If you keep, continue raising the rates, you're gonna close toll booths." And I think that's exactly what we're seeing happen. I don't understand how people in New York, and I'm, I'm kind of brash sometimes, but basically bean counters in New York tell the folks that they're gonna raise the rates, and, and I go back to my statement I made a few weeks ago, this is literally highway robbery. And I won't support it. I'd like to see whatever we can do to be, you know, it's time to take the icing off the cake and, and make some forceful statements to these folks up north that, you know, how we feel, what we'd like to see. And another thing I, that I found out the other day, and anybody that knows Morgan Lamb knows how diligent he would be and has been on this authority for him to give it up. Basically, he thought he was working for the citizens as a representative on this board. Mellon's thoughts are that he should be working for them, and that's part of the reason he resigned. But we need to get this lowered, we need to do something on that, make a strong statement, get this through. And the other thing that came out to me that I've recently found is, through our tax dollars, or main, not only we're paying money to go across the bridge, that money's going to the trustee, bondholders aren't getting paid, but the lawyers are getting paid, Mellon Bank's getting paid, DOT's maintaining that bridge under the assumption that they'll get repaid, and they haven't been repaid. So, that's something else I'd like our citizens to know, is our tax dollars, our transportation dollars are maintaining that bridge for Mellon, for the trustee, for the bondholders, and not getting repaid on that. Thank you.
Commissioner Lynchard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would move to Thursday, the adoption of a resolution in opposition to the toll increase as well as the reduction in the Sunpass discount. Without objection.
Hearing none, it passes. Thank you very much. It is 10:35. Jason, I know that you guys and people need to go to work, but we're gonna take a 10-minute break, and we'll be back in 10 minutes.
Let's get started back, please. About two or three items down on the agenda. It involves Life Guard. If any of the pilots have to leave, before we get to that, we understand, we don't want to be between you and life savings. So, if any of y'all have to leave and go do your job, we respect your right to do that. All right, number six. Discussion of following appointment, reappointment of local Restore Council members for our two-year terms pursuant to Resolution 2012-32. District One, Cal Bodenstein. District Two, Carol Tabey. District Three, Donna Tucker. District Four, Rob Williamson. District Five, Dave Rabou.
Robout.
Robout. City of Milton, Brian Watkins. City of Gulf Breeze, Edwin Eddy, also known as Buzz Eddy. Town of Jay, Sean Owens. Navarri Beach Chamber, Tony Alexander. Commissioner Designee, Commissioner Lane Lynchard. Any discussion?
Also, Mr. Chairman, without saying, is that's 10. The chairman always serves on the, and that rotates. First, it was Commissioner Cole, then Commissioner Melvin. Now you.
Let the record show that Commissioner Lynchard is the board's designee, but the chairman, that being myself, will also serve. Any other comments, Commissioner Williamson?
Just want to say thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say thank you to Mr. Fountain for serving so well and so selflessly. Really grateful for his time spent over the course of the last two years on the Restore Council. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and I wish Jeff Helms still here because I just met with him the other day to get brought up to speed on all the Restore issues. And Jeff assures me that our council, they're miles ahead of other locations. Commissioner Lynchard, would you agree with that?
I think we are, Mr. Chairman. You know, this has been, it's been two years since we first formed our Local Restore Council, and we've been working slowly but diligently to get where we are now. You know, there was a lot of waiting on Treasury to issue the regulations and then for the regulations to go final. That's all happened, and now we're getting into the fun stuff, if you will. We're going to start, hopefully in January, accepting actual project applications, start the vetting process later in the spring with the goal of having our multi-year implementation plan ready to present to the board and the public early summer of 2015. You know, Restore, the big dollars in Restore are still some time out. The litigation that BP is involved in, still ongoing over in New Orleans. I think Phase Three of the trials getting ready to start in January, if I'm not mistaken. But Santa Rosa County has about $4.2 million in our direct allocation from the first transocean settlement that is flowing through Restore. And that money, about $3 million is already available. The final installment of that settlement will come in, I believe, February. So, as of February, Santa Rosa County's direct allocation so far will be about $4.2 million, and that's what we're going to start planning for in the spring. So, the process is going to start speeding up, and hopefully we'll see great things in the next six months.
On behalf of the board, we appreciate all your leadership and direction on that as well. I would move the appointment-
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Williamson.
Excuse me.
Jared Williamson.
Sometimes I gotta tap whenever you're right next to me, and now you're too over, so I gotta tap louder. I just wanted to, for clarification, Commissioner Williamson, is that a placeholder for a future designee, or are you appointing yourself to, for the District Four?
Well, by matter of fact, I have appointed myself to the position in the short term. We'll see what transpires moving forward, but as of now, I will be the District Four appointee, just appointed myself.
I just needed that for clarification. Thank you, Mr. Williamson, and thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Here again, no other discussion, I would move the appointment, reappointment of the Local Restore Council members to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it's passed. Number seven, discussion of contract with Johnson &amp; Blanton LLC for provision of advocacy and lobbying services. Mr. Walker?
Chairman, in your packet is the proposed agreement. This is pursuant to the interviews that were done last week, and Johnson &amp; Blanton was the firm selected. And I believe the amount mirrors what it was in 2007, or whenever we concluded the first contract, and it's $5,000 a month, retainer for $60,000.
Any discussion?
We had mentioned about travel, and that travel would not be included, and they, as I recall, they vocalized that travel would not be an additional charge. I don't know if we need to include that as part of the agreement, but just wanted to have that on the record, that that was discussed.
I think the agreement does have an indication that they would be charged for travel, because that was in their proposal, but it can be removed. And I'll do that. And I know you, Commissioner Williamson, were concerned about conflict of interest, so there is a specific provision in here that deals with that subject.
Here again, I think it's, we need to expedite getting them onboard and get them involved in the process of creating our legislative list, because there's a lot of things they could help us with. Okay, I will move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number eight, discussion of issuance of certificate of public conveyance and necessity COPCN for operation of emergency air ambulance transportation services to Medtrans Corporation, DBA, Life Guard. Any discussion? Jason, you wish to speak? You don't have to. Any discussion by the board? I would move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Number nine, discussion of issuance of certificate of public conveyance and necessity COPCN for operation of emergency air ambulance transportation services to Air Methods Corporation. Any discussion? Jason, come forward, please. Name and address.
Jason Kimbrel, 4340 Avalon Boulevard, Vice President of Operations for Life Guard Ambulance Service. Life Guard feels strongly that the issuance of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Air Methods Corporation would directly impact the ability to sustain the Life Guard One program that is committed to serving the primary service area of Santa Rosa County. So, what does that mean? Back on June 20th, this board approved Life Guard Warons Certificate of Public Convenience and Necessity, and we committed to Santa Rosa County as our primary service area. We worked lockstep with the ground ambulance team. It's the same chief medical officer, Life Guard's employees on the aircraft, and that's what we focus on first. We do support outside counties over in Escambia, Okaloosa, South Alabama, but our primary service area, Santa Rosa County, on June 20th, this board approved the constituents and citizens of Santa Rosa County to have a life-saving asset within the community. Life Guard would urge the board to take action today and protect the Life Guard One program by rejecting Air Methods Corporation application for the renewal of a COPCN and replace it with a mutual aid agreement that exists in many other counties across the state of Florida, which will be approved by the Director of Emergency Management. Air Methods has not added jobs or invested in the infrastructure within Santa Rosa County. Life Guard has been a major economic engine since 2007, resulting in the creation of over 150 jobs, which is 120% job creation over seven years. This growth and ability to thrive within Santa Rosa County is much in part because of the support of this board. Life Guard continues to be one of the largest employers in Santa Rosa County. More importantly, Life Guard has worked hard to be a service that the community can count on. Life Guard has an unyielding commitment to customer satisfaction and customer service with over 1,000 community outreach hours a year just to educate the community and do our part to decrease mortality and decrease morbidity. On June 20th, the Life Guard One program began providing air medical services in Santa Rosa County, creating 23 jobs. Seventeen of those are full-time. Many of the men that you see in blue uniforms right now have relocated to this area, have purchased homes, and are contributing positively to the economic development of Santa Rosa County. What comes with that is a mean annual salary of $58,250, totaling $615,610 of annual salaries that are going into investing in local businesses, patronizing restaurants. Life Guard has committed over $150,000 in capital investments to support the Life Guard One program. More importantly, Life Guard has taken a community approach and given back to the community already with over 300 hours of community outreach. A letter was written to Mr. Walker on December 1st outlining the risk associated with the issuance of two COPCNs within one county. Air Methods Corporation has not invested within this community, though the service that they acquired in the early part of the year, Lifelight, has been a dynamic partner over the years. Air Methods purchased Lifelight. The Lifelight program as we know it is, was absorbed into the Air Methods Corporation business model. How they operate, I'm not sure what those plans are, but what I do know is this board has the opportunity to protect the Life Guard One program, issue only one COPCN to Life Guard Ambulance Service, or Medtrans Corporation, DBA, Life Guard, to allow us to continue this integrated air medical program, which is very unique. As I mentioned to you on the 20th of this year, of June 20th, there's only three programs from Austin, Texas, down to Miami-Dade, Florida, and that one of them happens to be here. It's already been linked to surviving, surviving patients that would otherwise not have made it. It's already been linked to better patient outcomes. Again, this is a serious issue to protect the jobs, to protect the infrastructure. I urge you to reject the COPCN for Air Methods Corporation and replace it with a standard mutual aid agreement that exists all across the state of Florida. Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Good morning. Air Methods Business Representative for the Pan Am, my name's Aaron Brown. I live in Chalamar. First of all, let me just say, the request for the application of the COPCN is in no means of threat to the current COPCN. In May of this year, you issued Air Methods a COPCN for the operations of Santa Rosa County. At that time, that was prior to the implementation of Life Guard One. Since then, we have carried the COPCN throughout the year in conjunction of support with Life Guard One here as your primary service provider. I just want to point out a couple of things that I have jotted down. One of them is, you know, not normally would we request a COPCN in a county that we do not occupy. We currently are based in the adjacent county at Baptist Hospital. The unique situation that you have here, and the reason that we requested the COPCN for Santa Rosa County, is that you have two Baptist hospitals in your community. Both of those hospitals are serviced directly by Lifelight from Pensacola, which are your citizens and your people that live here in this community that are employed by those hospitals. We are a strong partner with both Sacred Heart and Baptist, and the acquisition that occurred earlier this year, contractually abides by us to work with Baptist Lifelight and with Baptist Hospital. We don't make any decisions without their input. We don't make any decisions on business, locations, helicopters, anything that we do, other than day-to-day and safety of flight issues. We meet with them on a regular basis to communicate those. So, I ask for the COPCN for a couple of reasons. One is that when the Baptist Lifelight helicopter repositions from Pensacola-Baptist, it repositions to Gulf Breeze. It technically goes to a sub-base there at Gulf Breeze while other helicopters bring the patients to the trauma center or take them from the trauma, from the facility somewhere else. Obviously, with Baptist helicopter being on the roof, it is not the only helicopter that services, Life Guard One services. The other Lifelight helicopters service, and so does Airheart helicopters. The other reason I ask for it is that we, Air Methods, is in a contractual agreement with CHS, which is the owner of Santa Rosa Medical Center. Now, Life Guard One is adjacent to that hospital, so they are primary up on that to service that hospital for patients transferred from that facility. But the contract exists from, through Air Methods and CHS as a provider of them as well. Because of these three hospitals located in your community, and our helicopters being in your community so much and having so much of a presence here for you guys and all the citizens that you represent, we ask for the COPCN. Additionally, just a couple little tidbits of information for you to have as far as numbers. From June, since the inception of Life Guard One, we have done everything we can to work with them and support them. There's been hiccups, which are normal for a new program to come into the area and for us to work with them, but one of the great things, I think, that we have seen is that we've had 28 requests for assistance from them, and six of those were actually completed flights between the Baptist Lifelight program and the Airheart program. That was for your citizens in this community. Additionally, we have completed 36 hospital transfers, and this is all just from June. We've completed 36 hospital transfers from the three hospitals that are in your community. And we have repositioned to Gulf Breeze 28 times in six months. So, that just gives you a little bit of information of how much we are in your community, even though we are not based here, and how important we feel that it is to have a COPCN to work directly with you guys. Again, this is not any kind of a threat towards the business. We have worked for the past six months with Life Guard. We have not at any time attempted to take anything from them, from this community, from any representation that they have for you, working with you, and working with the ground providers. I'm open to any questions.
Any questions, comment by the board? Mr. Cole?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In what way would a mutual aid agreement, or what would differ from a mutual aid agreement that you're doing now with a COPCN that a mutual aid agreement would not allow you to do? Is there any?
No, sir.
And then, on just turning that question around, what can you do with a COPCN that you cannot do with a mutual aid?
Well, the COPCN is an agreement with the county and with the provider. Under normal circumstances, with the helicopter being based in the community, it's a requirement as far as operations within that community. Baptist Hospital has held a COPCN with Santa Rosa County for, probably since its inception. When we acquired the program earlier this year, we requested the COPCN be changed over to our name and issued back to Air Methods, because we became the primary operator of it. So, in that case, that COPCN has been in place for all of those years, simply because the importance this community has with the hospitals here in this community. Just the two Baptist hospitals themselves, Baptist Hospital and Air Methods, felt it was necessary to have a COPCN in order to support you guys. So, that puts on paper that that helicopter is here to help you. So that puts on paper that you're, that helicopter is here to help you. The only thing that would change it in this case with you having a primary provider is that it would automatically default to your primary provider, which would be Lifeguard, and we would still be here as a secondary. We just feel that it's important to have a COPCN in your community because of the hospitals and the people in your community that we serve.
It's my understanding that Escambia County has one primary COPCN, and Okaloosa has one primary COPCN?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct? And so Santa Rosa County at this time, we don't have just one primary?
That's correct. Well, no, you do have, I'm, I'm, I don't know how it is issued. You have two COPCNs, one issued to Air Methods and one issued to Lifeguard. Lifeguard is your primary provider because they're, they occupy this community and this county.
Stand by for other questions, please.
Yes, sir.
Jason, very quickly?
Yes, sir. I certainly respect your time. Just for some clarity points, just to give you an example of what, two, two, two quick examples of what could happen depending on the action of the board. For one, nothing, again, I, I don't know Air Methods playbook, but giving them a COPCN does give them a ticket to ride strategically. They could put a base of operations across the runway from where we're currently at, and we'd be dead in the water, period. That's number one. So what's said today, though I respect Aaron Brown, he's, he's a great leader, but who's to say he's going to be here in two, three, four, five years down the road? They currently have, right now until this board takes action, a ticket to potentially strategically kill our base of operations, which we've invested in first and foremost the community. The contractual obligations and, and how all that plays and who does what, that's the least of our concerns. First of all, it's, it's the community, and that's going to lead to my second, my second point. And what happens if this board chooses to issue two COPCNs? If our ground ambulance service, which is fully integrated with our Lifeguard One air base, if we transport a patient, a drowning baby in a pool unfortunately from the city of Milton to Santa Rosa Medical Center? What could happen if what Mr. Brown was talking about, his arrangements with CA, CHS and Air Methods? If, if Santa Rosa Medical Center sets up that emergent transport for this post-drowning patient that was just resuscitated in the emergency department? If Lifelight One's not available out of Pensacola, let's, let's hope that they would? They do have the ability to send their helicopter from Greenville, Alabama. I've got young children. God forbid they do that. Or they could send their aircraft out of Mississippi and keep it within that Air Methods transportation enterprise. It could certainly affect the health, safety, and welfare of this community. Though the frequency is unknown, the reality is absolutely truly real. Absolutely real. When you let contracts get in the way of the community, people are going to get hurt. And what we pledge to you, and it says Santa Rosa County EMS on the side of our helicopter, we pledge to this community first. And those constituents that we transport from the scene, go into the emergency department, they require emergency transport for an ill or injured patient, and we dedicate our time first on that. Contracts, bottom line, is way down the line. Thank you, sir.
My comments and my thoughts is that, you know, our primary ground provider now is DBA Lifeguard. I look at this as an opportunity to line up the air piece of it with the ground piece of it, as long as it's understood that we will have that mutual aid agreement, and I would assume you have mutual aid agreement now with ground operator providers. Is that right, Jason?
Yes, sir. And there goes it just today.
You have to come to the...
Sorry.
Sorry about that. Yes, sir. The mutual aid agreement through our E-911 Center today, which is actually going to be dispatching a Lifeguard One helicopter, Mr. Baker's here today and he could certainly comment on that, but the, the default to mutual aid agreement is already in place today. If Lifeguard One's not available, the next contact is Lifelight out of Pensacola. So if the board approves today the issuance of one COPCN, then automatically the backup plan to ensure that there's no interruption in service, the service lines stay the same is already in place today. It's concrete. It's been tested. Mr. Brown spoke about that today. The mutual aid's already in place. Anything that we need to, to, to enhance that, we'll certainly do, but again, the issuance of one today is not going to affect anything operationally. Yes, sir.
Last comments, and we're going to move on.
Yes, sir. I just want to add, before you make your decision, one thing on the record. Since the inception of Lifeguard One, at no time, and will it ever be a time, that patient care is not our number-one priority. Let's want that to be clear. Air Methods' number-one priority is patient care, no matter whose county it is. Thank you.
Any other comments by the board? Here again, we won't make a decision on it today. We're going, we're going to move this to Thursday. This is agenda without objection. Hearing, none of it passes. Number 10, discussion of legislative priority list for 2015 legislative session. Mr. Walker?
Mr. Chairman, in your packet is the, the, I took the liberty of just taking your 2014 issues and, and placed it in there just as a, a starter. It's time that we will, we will get together with the legislative delegation. I don't exactly remember what that date is. I, I think Representative Ingram is the delegation chair this year, so he, he usually sets something up. I will note that on this, these are, are typically to be local issues. We don't have to, to reflect the FAC or the small counties' priorities. This is just what, what the delegations asking input from, from each of its board of commissioners and, and elected bodies is what's important, what locally is important to you. And, and as you'll see on, on our particular list for last year, we, we, we had the Navarre Beach Renourishment effort that's going through the FD, DEP. Mr. Michael Walther is here to, to discuss that in the engineering report. Obviously, it needs to stay. We'll need to rework it for the, the, the new year and the new information, but obviously that's, that's something that needs to be done. I don't know that we need the, the bare human mitigation kind, plan. I mean, the, the state's developed a plan. It's my understanding that they're, they're still trying to work through on all those issues. It's my understanding, number three, the special incentives on the economic developments have been done. Mr. Ogletree does, does request that we keep number four regarding the brownfield bonus guidelines. We'll have to see if we need to keep those. I mean, they're trying to keep these to be local issues, and then the, the widening of SR 87 has been a, an ongoing, and I'm not sure about the, the oyster fishing when that came. Citrus canker could go away. And then you see the other small programs, the age of libraries, the, the defense infrastructure, reinvestment grants, those, those type of things. Certainly, we need to add the widening aviation park and kind of come up with a strategy and a plan for that with, with Johnson Firm and also with, with the board. I, we need to do that. Kyle Hawley had reminded me that they have received, that Agriplex Committee has, has received the, the notification of funding, or at least notification that they're on the list for funding for that second phase of that particular project. I believe they lost that funding in the, in the waning session of the legislature last year, if I recall the story. So he's asked that that be included in the list, and it, it certainly makes sense.
Commissioner Richard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things when you're wordsmithing those requests or, or, or points. The Navarre Beach Renourishment, there was a blurb this morning that came out that anticipated a funding level of $25 million versus the $47 million that was allocated last year. This would revert it back to where it was two years ago, three, four years ago. So it would make it more difficult for communities to tap into that, that grant funding for beach renourishment. In addition, there's been a lot of talk of Amendment One and how Amendment One is going to be implemented because the legislature's going to be wrangling with that during session. So Amendment One is going to mean hundreds of millions of dollars to land acquisition and preservation statewide, and we need to talk with our local delegation about how we can position ourselves to, to take advantage of that. And beach renourishment is something that has also been bandied about as a possible source of, of revenue for, or, or source of expenditure for Amendment One funds. So if beach renourishment becomes an eligible expenditure, the amount available statewide could go up tremendously. Again, I think the, our consultant will probably talk about that later. It would be great if the state could adopt a statewide beach renourishment plan. You know, we have 400-plus miles of critically eroded beach in the state and no state plan to deal with it. So four of those miles are right here in Santa Rosa County. Those are the ones we're primarily concerned about, but it would be nice if the state had a cohesive plan that could, that could impact the issue. That's all I have.
I concur, and I think probably one of our priorities should be to encourage them to develop a statewide plan. Any other comments by the board? Commissioner Cole?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. And I appreciate the board's support of the initiative with the Department of Agriculture. Cal's worked real hard on that for the second phase of that Agriplex, so I appreciate your support. But on beach renourishment, my comments were very similar that, you know, we, we need to use Johnson and Blanton. We need to use all our emphasis with FAC to, to get the state more involved because, you know, the beaches, even though we got county lines, those beaches start in Escambia County, go around the tip of the Keys and the whole way up to Georgia. And, and we need to see that, but not only that, but on a national basis. We need, I think we need to get more emphasis to Congressman Miller that, you know, the American government needs to get more involved in, in, in these things all the way around the country, you know? So perhaps we need to also ask him, but, and it was nice to see that we at least did get one done on number five with the widening of State Road 87. So that's just my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So I guess the action would be to, Commissioner J.R. Williamson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to add, while we're looking at different things that may be of importance, the courthouse issue is not going to go away. Washington County received somewhere between six and eight million dollars, I believe, in the last cycle. I think that would be an issue we definitely, we can ask. All they can tell us is no, but it will be a help. It might help go from a five-year to a four-year sales tax, which may be the difference in passing something in the future. So just want to keep in mind the courthouse issue because, like I said, it's not, not going away.
Obviously, I would encourage each commissioner to give Mr. Walker, give him the additional input, and he'll come back and present that list to us at a later date. No action on that today?
Well, yeah, we, we, we would try to get something put together, at least fleshed out as best we could in, 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 by, by Thursday at least to get us started because I suspect that the, that delegation meeting is typically, it's typically pretty quick, so, so we...
So the recommendation would be to direct staff to prepare a tentative legislative priority list for 2015 legislative session by Thursday.
Please.
Move, move, move that to Thursday. This is agenda without objection here, and none of it passes?
Understanding it'll be a work in progress.
Right. Number 11, discussion of fixed base operator FBO operations on Peter Prince Airport. Mr. Walker?
Mr. Chairman, this is an item that Mr. Cole had asked to be on the agenda, and I, I placed his email, and then I kind of put together a memo from me outlining the areas of his concern. Also asked Mr. William, Mr. Andrews to look at the portions of the issues that he, he had, had referenced that, that he could speak to, and that's what's included in the, in the backup. I'd be glad to answer any, any specific questions. I mean, we, we had the one FBO out there for a number of years, fixed base operator. We now have two, and, and we're just in the, you know, working through operational issues at the, the airport. If you notice, the minimum standards was one of the ones, and I think that's the one that, that, that we've tried to focus on. The board had approved the minimum standards. Our approach to this point has been to, to enforce or to implement the minimum standards through the, the specific leases, whether that be the individual hangar leases with the 90 or 100 hangar tenants that we have on the airport and plus with the two fixed base operators. So that's been our approach in how we, how we will, will move along. I will say that during the development of the, the minimum standards is, that was a months-long process going through with the Aviation Advisory Committee and our consultant. And a number of pilots did, it seemed like one of those, one of the documents is about 40-something pages, and the others maybe 23, 24 pages, and they were just saying, you know, we've got 60 pages of rules for Peter Prince Field. And so again, they've just asked airports, so they've just asked us to be as judicious in, in administering and implementing these, these standards, and that's what we're, we're seeking to do.
Discussion by the board. Commissioner Cole?
Mr. Chairman, just to, you know, being in District Two and having the airport out there, it's been brought to my attention that we need to fully implement minimum standards and then enforce them. I provided the board with some information. I'm sorry it didn't get out last week, it just got out this morning. I thought evidently the staff didn't get my facts on this, but it'd be a whole lot different if we weren't getting federal funding for our airport, but it seems the Federal Aviation Administration expects minimum standards stood up and adhered to. And I just, it's just, I, I just feel like it's time for us to go ahead. We've got them developed. They've been through the Aviation Advisory Committee, and for us to continue to grow that airport as we've seen in the, in the last year, year and a half with the growth out there, that, that we get these minimum standards implemented and, and keep them in place and enforcing.
Any other comments by the board? Mr. Walker, where do we stand on implementation of minimum standards?
Well, as I noted, the board's approved them, and we're, how we have, how we have administered them to this, to this point is that the minimum standards and, and, and lease agreements are congruent, both the lease agreements for the hangar tenants and the, the two fixed base operators. And as you noted in the report, we inspect the hangars, the, the hangars annually with, with life safety inspectors and, and with the administrative services manager. The life safety people are dealing with, as you would think, life safety issues to make sure that there's no improperly stored materials in the, in the hangars, that they're, the, the operations within the hangars meet, meet life safety concerns, because there's no, the hangars out there, there, there are no firewalls between the hangars. So you, you, you have to, we, we're very careful about the life safety portion of that. Also, the administrative services manager administers that from the minimum standards portion that specifically includes no commercial operation out there. And the, in the recent, as you noted in my memo, in the, in the recently completed inspections is in, of those hangars, we, we have developed or identified what appears to be some commercial operations. We will be enforcing that with the county attorney through the, the lease process. We probably do need to sit down with both the FBO, fixed base operators, and, and, and see how that looks in, in their agreements. They both have had existing leases, and we were, we're trying to be very careful about how we, how we implemented the standards. But we, we certainly can move forward on, on that. I mean, we're...
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Cole?
A couple items on here that I'll point out, and we can, the board can have opportunity to look at this between now and Thursday, is that, you know, you'll note on here on line nine, 10, 11, where the airport allowed maintenance services beside this, in this particular case, it was called Sky Harbor, to provide aircraft maintenance and direct competition with the FBO. Airport didn't require others to meet the same requirements, which is a violation of FAA rule, and the airport must submit a plan to make sure anyone doing maintenance meets minimum standards. And then...
And then, final thing that's really a concern, like I say, we get a lot of funding from the FAA, as the agency told the airport, it would require repayment of grant if issues weren't resolved. So again, as we continue to grow that airport, and we talked earlier about it possibly being incubator for, for our, our bigger facility out at Whiting Aviation Park, that it's a good time to go ahead and get these implemented, get everybody used to them, do a full implementation on these minimum standards.
So Mr. Walker, I guess the action would be on Thursday to direct staff to move forward, working with the Aviation Advisory Committee, to fully implement minimum standards?
We certainly can. We, we think that we are fully implementing them, but the, I don't know that there's any specific action unless the board wants to take those. You've approved the standards.
Commissioner? I'm confused then, because when, when I talked about with the county administrator before, I understood we had not yet implemented minimum standards.
I might have to go back and...
I think what I'm hearing is, Mr. Walker said the board has approved implementation of the, we have approved the standards and staff's in the process of implementing. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Is there a timeframe?
And I'd be glad to sit down again with Commissioner Cole, and, and I'm not sure about the, the, the items that he's talking about as far as that we're not enforcing, but, I mean, there, 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 it has been a work in progress. I mean, it, it, it's been a pretty substantial change from how we've done operated in the past. I mean, it's just, it is, and, you know, we have the staff that we have. So again, we'd be glad to work with you on that.
And I would encourage Mr. Walker to sit down with Commissioner Cole and, and address those issues. I know there's been a lot of back and forth between the two FBOs out there. I like what you said about sitting down with both of them and make sure they understand what those standards are as well. Okay, no action on Thursday then. Moving on, number twelve, discussion of public notice advertising for solid waste recycling collection services by Emerald Coast Utility Authority. Mr. Walker?
Chairman, this is an item that Commissioner J.R. Williamson had asked, it was just, they put on just to kind of update the board on, on the actions that ECUA has taken as we move towards the January changeover with the solid waste in the northern part of the county. And I gave you the, the latest breakdown this morning from, from Ms. Abuka, who will be back at work tomorrow. She's had some surgery and has been out. And you see the number of customers that they have through December fifth. The, the public education is, will be two more county press releases, and then we, we propose to use the robo-calls or the automated calls for the area in, in Wednesday of this week. We also, if you notice, that in your packet is a, is a postcard that ECUA will be mailing out today to each of the residents in the, the service area, which I will note that both Waste Pro and Waste Management did that when we changed over in the south end three years ago. And that, I think that's pretty effective, because people, you know, don't particularly pay any attention to our press releases as, as a rule. So also that ECUA is, is, is publishing, is, is purchasing advertising in the north end papers and to try to be sure and get the, get the word out, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Cole?
Just for clarification, on, on our backup, it has garbage pickup twice a week in a wheeled ninety-five gallon container. In our current signups, we have quite a few people, forty-six, that took a sixty gallon without recycling, or sixty gallon with recycling. Is there any cost differentiation on any of these, or is it a set price? You just choose what you want out of that?
I think the ninety-five is the standard.
Okay.
And I, and there's not a cost differential.
So fifty-one, twenty-seven, for whatever service you choose, if you go to the smaller container, it's, you still pay the same price?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. J.R. Williamson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I just wanted to add this to the item that we're, we're talking a little more about it, because I have had some people that say, hey, you know, I had no idea about this. There's, you can lead a horse to water, you can't make him drink type thing, and there's going to be people that still fall through the cracks. But I wanted us to talk about it a little more, because people will leave this meeting, people are watching at home, they'll talk a little more, because January second, calls are going to be coming in to these three commissioners, maybe the two down there, but especially us three. There was a concern that's been raised throughout this process of signing up, and I wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. I don't think it's an issue that's a deal breaker or anything like that, and I've expressed my concerns with ECUA. I, I think this is going to be a great thing moving forward, this partnership with ECUA. I think this can be good for the community. I think that once we get through these initial bumps in, in the road, everything's going to, going to be really good, the way it's worked in the south end. But one issue that I have got a few calls, and, and visitors even at my, my office, to come by, and they, they say, you know, we have to give them our driver's license number to sign up for, for trash pickup. Not something you have to give if you sign up for Gulf Power, I don't believe, not something you have to give if you sign up for your phone, but you have, for trash pickup, you have to give your driver's license number. With security breaches and everything that we deal with in, in society these days, that's, that's something that's been an issue. So I spoke with ECUA, and the reason that they ask for the driver's license number is that's their security measure, as far as if somebody called and said, I want to change my service, or I want to get rid of it, then they ask for the driver's license number. So some, you know, Commissioner Rob Williamson couldn't call and in my trash garbage number without having my driver's license number. It's just kind of their, their security breach. Well, I asked them, can we go to just like a four-digit PIN, or some of the things we use with other companies? If, if it does become more of an issue in Santa Rosa County, especially in the north end, people not wanting to give their private information, or as much as they already have to? And, and they said that they, they still feel confident in their company's policy of using the driver's license number. They did state if somebody has an issue with that, they're not going to decline any service, so you'd have to ask to speak to another representative. But what I ask of them is, when I get calls, people being upset about having to give their driver's license number, what I want is, I want a number to tell them, hey, I agree with you one hundred percent, I've spoken to ECUA about this, and they've said that's their company policy, here's the name and the number that you need to speak with. And that lady, who will probably not send me a Christmas card now, but her name is Nettie Williams, N-E-T-T-I-E Williams, and her number is eight-five-zero-nine-six-nine-six-five-nine-seven. That's any issues you have with signing up for ECUA, you can, you can send that along to her, so they're also hearing the complaints as well as this board. And I just wanted to put that out there, there has been a little bit of an issue. I don't think it's a deal breaker. I think this is going to be a good mutual partnership. We just have to get through a few of the bumps in the road. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And that's been my direction to staff, is make sure that ECUA is consistent with their information, their policy, and their procedures, because I'm hearing, different people are hearing different things, so hopefully we'll get through it.
And we really, and we really all have to work with them on that, because, and, and there was some, some bit of that when we went through the changeover in the, in, in the south end, particularly that when, it, when they got different representatives, I think that's what Commissioner Salter's speaking to, there was, it, it just seemed to be a little inconsistent, so we're working on that. We're certainly continuing to work on the, on the driver's license issue, because that just seems over the top. I mean, we're all concerned about, gosh, if the, if the United States government can get hacked, and, and Target can get hacked, I mean, you're, you're certainly concerned that ECUA can get hacked.
Commissioner Cole?
Yeah, I think they'll see a big increase, and people go ahead and get signed up as quickly we can get that resolved.
I don't, I don't see any action on Thursday, other than keep communicating that January second date. Number thirteen, discussion of appointment of Robert, Robin Edwards and Colton Wright to local planning board representing District Four. Commissioner Rob Williamson?
Thank you, Chairman Salter. Just wanted to first of all say thank you to Ms. Carol Boston and David Powell, who both served the District Four zoning board for quite some time and did a great job. They are moving on to other things, and thanking them for their service. The two replacements will be Ms. Robin Edwards, who resides in District Four. Ms. Edwards formerly served on the board. You can see the information's been provided about her bio in the packet. And then the second appointee to the zoning board will be Mr. Colton Wright. He resides outside of District Four. Both of the appointees have been made aware that if the district, the one that resides within District Four, if she is to leave or change residence for any reason, that she's to notify us, so we can make sure that we comply and have a representative that, at least one representative that resides within District Four. But information was provided in the packet, they'll be ready to start serving in January, and I'll entertain any questions from the board.
Obviously, we have a couple speakers, yes ma'am, you want to speak on this?
Nancy Forrester, sixty-eight, twenty-five, Tidewater Drive, Navarre, Florida. I wanted to know, for the planning board, do we have a master plan for District Four, for the Navarre area?
We have a comprehensive plan in Santa Rosa County that's mandated by statute, and the comprehensive plan encompassed within that is the Land Development Code, which sets forth the different zonings and the different zoning classifications throughout the county. There's a master plan that was put together for Navarre Beach some years ago, but as far as District Four specifically, there's, the master plan, I guess, would be your comp plan or your land development code as it relates to development. Now, I can tell you that one of the goals that I have as the District Four representative is to work toward a overall District Four improvement plan. To that end, you're going to hear about something with the NYSA, an improvement that we had with them, to solicit input. We've got a survey that's going to be going out. I was looking to meet with the Public Information Officer, she's been on leave, she's now back this week, I believe, on Thursday, and we're going to get a survey out to District Four residents based on that community input, then we'll move forward with a plan to where we can have a roadmap of success. And I don't know that we want to necessarily go down this wormhole too far this morning, but bottom line, there is no master plan in place right now, to my knowledge, other than the Land Development Code and comprehensive plan that we already have.
Okay.
But I can tell you that very interested in listening to the feedback of the District Four residents and putting a course of action in place to where at any time, a District Four resident or anybody else in Santa Rosa County can plug in and look at what we're working on, what are we working toward improving, to where we're all kind of reading off the same sheet of music.
Mm-hmm, okay.
I hope that answered your question, Ms. Forrester.
Yes, yes, it did. And, and I know you're, you're just getting, getting into things with it, so I know, I don't expect it to be number one priority right now, but we do have forty-two thousand people in our area, so if you can kind of try to move that up towards the top, we'd really appreciate it. We, we want to make sure that we have an organized plan, and I look forward to being able to provide feedback to you when you have these surveys out.
Sure, and once we do get done meeting with staff, and, and thank you, you know, it has only been a couple of weeks since getting sworn in, but we had some things that we want to try to get on the agenda for today, but I don't want to take up a lot of the board's time on this. I'll be happy to meet with you after the meeting, or you can always reach out to me, but we're going to be having regular meetings. I'm going to be moving my primary office down to Navarre, that'll be open up next week, so I'll be there all the time.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I think he just had his question answered. Okay. I was talking to the gentleman behind you. Anyone else?
We're good.
Okay, so we will move to Thursday, the appointment of Robin Edwards and Colton Wright to local planning board representing District Four. Without objection here, none, it passes. Number fourteen, discussion of updated Equal Employment Opportunity Program policy to comply with federal requirements. Mr. Walker?
Mr. Chairman, you see the information from the HR director, so we would just make these recommendations to comply.
You wish to speak to this, sir?
Sir, what was, Earl Dean, seven-four-five-six, Woodmont Street, Navarre, what was the response to that question? Mr. Walker?
The response to what question?
The chair asked a question in reference to the EEO Equal Employment Opportunity issue?
It was just an update.
It's an update? Is there an ongoing program?
Yes, this, yeah, we've always had an equal opportunity program, and, and this just updates it to maintain currency with the latest requirement.
Is there members of Santa Rosa County voters, or members, or people involved in it, or are you just doing it in-house? Are you having any members of the community of Santa Rosa County involved, and other than people just in-house here?
No.
Why not?
Again, we've had this, we've had the policy for, for years. This is just to comply with what, what the federal regulations are.
Okay, I, I'm not going to stay on this, but I'll get with you after this meeting in order to address that. Is that okay with you?
Suits me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Hearing no other discussion, we'll move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Number fifteen, discussion of annual marine sanctuary run for the Reef Five-K, Ten-K race on Navarre Beach on Saturday, October tenth, twenty-fifteen, beginning at eight o'clock AM. If there's no discussion, we'll move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Sixteen, discussion of Amendment Number Four to agreement with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, extending the coastal partnership initiative grant for Baghdad Mill Site through June thirtieth, twenty-fifteen. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move this to Thursday without objection. Hearing none, it is passed. Number seventeen, discussion of FY twenty-thirteen severe repetitive loss grant agreement with Florida Division of Emergency Management for elevation of structure located at thirty-one, thirty-five Harrison Avenue. Any discussion? Move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Eighteen, discussion of scheduling board planning workshop on Wednesday, January twenty-eighth, twenty-fifteen, beginning at nine AM. Any discussion? Hopefully that clears everyone's calendars. Hearing no discussion, move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number nineteen, discussion of rescheduling January nineteenth, twenty-fifteen committee of the whole meeting to January the twentieth, twenty-fifteen, and observance of Martin Luther King Holiday. Move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number twenty, discussion of amending Resolution ninety-seven point forty-four to include Signatory Authority of Vice Chair in absence of Chair. Any discussion? Hearing none, move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number twenty-one, discussion of the following expenditures at Navarre View Sports Complex, Complex Hollyfield from District Four Recreation Funds, based on comparison shopping. Commissioner Rob Williamson?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This came about from two meetings with the NYSA board shortly after I was sworn in, and I asked them for an immediate needs list, and that that immediate needs list would be with the interest of working toward a, the development of a Navarre or NYSA park improvement plan. That information's been provided in your backup. You can see the plan provides for many different items that they've identified for improvements to the park. The immediate needs were the items that you see there, the scorers' tables, bleachers, picnic tables, and a utility vehicle or gator. Total expenditure for these items is right at forty-five thousand, two fifty-two. I would ask that on Thursday for board approval to allocate or move forward with a budget for those funds from the District Four Recreation Budget. You'll also, sorry, you'll also see on there twenty-six thousand for restrooms, upgrades. That's something that the county administrator is currently working with staff on. They have come out and visited the restrooms, they've done a site visit, and they're working on pricing to make sure they get things tightened up there, and we'll probably see that in the January time period. Just want to say real quick that the folks at the NYSA board have been overwhelmingly supportive, and they have been responsive. The attendance when you go to the meetings is just amazing. They're, they're a great group, they're good community partners, they serve an unbelievable number of kids, and I'm really excited to get plugged in and work with them and to make improvements to their park. We know about the Holly Park, a couple of the things that were requested were that folks would have an opportunity to, to sit instead of having to sit in their cars. The bleachers that are part of this request will allow us to take two existing smaller bleachers... bleachers from the NYSA park proper and move them to Hollyfield, and we're going to keep moving forward with improvements on both of those locations. Thank you.
You ladies wish to speak to this? Name and address, please.
Stacy Wright, eight six seven five Sand Pine Drive, Navarre. I'm also a board member of the Navarre U Sports Association. My husband and I have been volunteer sponsors, my husband is coach for over ten years there, and so we're very plugged in, as well as very plugged in with the community, and I just wanted to thank Commissioner Rob Williamson for all of the support, he's jumped right on board, he's been to our meetings, he's heard us, he's walked the parks, and as he's seen, there has been a really great need to improve. The park has grown tremendously even since I've been there in the past ten years. However, the improvements and the needs and the, the growth really hasn't, I mean, it hasn't grown with the children, so we are just very appreciative of all of the support that we know we're going to be getting, continue to get. We have a three-year park improvement plan that is posted on the NYSA website, anyone is welcome to take a look at it. It is a, you know, a, a, a moving and growing plan, so it's subject to change. We appreciate any of the support and input from the community. Thank you.
Thank you for all your volunteer work, and it takes a community to make it happen.
Thank you.
Next.
Good morning, Donna Harville, thirty-three fifty-two, Highway eighty-seven, Holly, Florida. I certainly appreciate all of your support, all the county commissioners, and all the emails I received, very positive from the public, and we are moving forward. We have done everything we, we have been asked to do since August, when I came before you then, and I certainly appreciate your support. If you need anything, just let us know. NYSA is, has over four thousand children, and when I came before you in August, I did not realize how many kids there were. So this has become even more important to the, to the folks down in the south end of the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Donna. Next.
Kathleen Passmore, seventy-four seventy-nine, Navarre. Thank you, commissioners, I do appreciate what you're doing today, you're investing in our children. Donna, thank you for coming forward to bringing this to the commissioners' attention. Ms. Rob Williams, you were not a commissioner when we started, Donna has been instrumental in this. Thank you for the board member coming from NYSA today for stepping forward for the first time in the real world. Thank you, hopefully one of many times, showing support for our children, our children need this support, this, this community shows great support for our children. You look at the media today, you look at the news, you see what's the outcome of our children. We can change that here in Santa Rosa County, which is God's country to me, we can change a lot, and thank you, commissioners, for, for responding to this field. This, this park is so important to the Holly community, it's not just, it's a historical value, it used to be our school, it was our hub, it was our main function, I mean, fish fries, meeting places, our voting, we did everything on this property, and to continue this in some way to benefit the children is awesome, and thank you, commissioners, for being there to do this for our children. Thank you.
Comments to all three ladies and everybody else in Navarre? Your commissioner's still new? Working. Wear him out. All right, we will move this to Thursday's agenda without objection, hearing none, it passes. Twenty-two submission, discussion of submission applications to the Florida Division of Emergency Management for following hazard mitigation grant program projects. First is Ranchettes, North Ridge and Whisper Bay subdivision drainage improvements, tier one. Second one is Villa Venise Court, Venise and Way Court Drainage Improvements, tier one. Next is Patterson Lane, Pace Lane Drainage Improvements, tier two. Last one is Marinatha Way, Chipper Lane Drainage Improvement, tier two, any discussion by the board? Hearing none, I would move this to Thursday's agenda without objection, hearing none, it passes. Number twenty-three, discussion of task order SR 2014 dash oh five to contract with Title Basin Government Consulting LLC for disaster recovery administrative services through February 28th, 2015. Any discussion? Move this to Thursday's agenda without objection, hearing none, it passes. Number twenty-four, discussion of annual renewal of permit for operation of non-emergency medical transport to XC Transporters Incorporated, doing business as Specialty Care Transporters Incorporated of Northwest Florida. Mr. Walker?
I think these next, next items are going to be just your, your, your normal renewals of these permits that are non-emergency.
Okay. Any discussion by the board?
Let you do them every December.
Move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Number twenty-five, discussion of annual renewal of permit for operation of non-emergency medical transport for TLT Transport LLC. Move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Number twenty-six, hearing none, it passes. Number twenty-six, discussion of purchase of countywide tier pool storage area network system sands for the computer department at a cost of one hundred and eleven thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty-four cents. Mr. Walker?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is just, comes as a recommendation from Ms. Floyd regarding the, the additional storage area that we need for that system.
Any discussion by the board? Move this to Thursday's agenda without objection, hearing none, it passes. Number twenty-seven, hearing item scheduled for nine-thirty AM Thursday, December the eleventh, 2014. Two items, one is the annual resolution authorizing uniform collection of non-avalorum assessments for projects which may include road paving, water, sewer, fire protection, et cetera, or any other purpose authorized by law, second amendment to ordinance two zero zero five dash thirty-seven, suspending imposition of transportation impact fees for 2015. We discussed this a couple of weeks ago, I would move both of these to Thursday's agenda without objection, hearing none, it passes. Number twenty-eight, Commissioner Cole had an add-on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I'd like to do is ask the board to, one of Santa Rosa's largest industries is the home building industry, providing the American dream to thousands each year, and whether it's a first-time buyer or a change-of-life needs, they continue to build our Santa Rosa County tax base, and I'd like to have the home builders, they have a product that basically everybody has to have, a home, and I'd like to ask the board to send a letter inviting David Peaton and the Home Builders Association to either come to the meeting at the end of January or first of February, to basically give us a state-of-the-industry comment. How's it doing? What's the turnaround? What are, what are we seeing? What can we expect for the year? And, and then possibly they could relate to us with how perhaps we can help them expedite that or make things easier in their industry. Certainly, I would think, one of the largest industries we have in our county, and I think it'd just be nice to have them come in and give us that, so. With Thursday, I'd like to ask that the board approve that letter and the chairman sign it and get it to Mr. Peaton in, in his capacity.
Sounds like a good idea, and maybe under economic development, since that is one of our largest economic, economic engines in the county. Move approval of Commissioner Cole's request without objection, hearing none, it passes. Engineers report. Mr. Blaylock?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is a presentation by our consultant, Michael Walther, with Coastal Technology, and this is relative to the Navarre Beach Restoration Project. Mr. Walther's going to give a brief presentation of where we've been and where we're going with this important re-nourishment.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Roger, good morning, commissioners. Very quickly, I'm going to give you a brief history and update of the Navarre project, and in the big picture, we have obtained the necessary permits in order to allow the construction to proceed. The final plans and technical specifications consistent with those permits have been provided to county staff for review, and I hope, I'll outline for you some of the history and perspective here, again, the status and next steps, and offer any opportunity for any questions the board may have. Firstly, the history, if we go back and look at the project area in Navarre Beach before the 2006 nourishment event, virtually every storm that occurred of any significance had significant negative impacts upon the Navarre Beach area. Not only did storms push sand off the beach back into the roads and into the houses, land rid of the beachfront properties, but also literally washed sand underneath the buildings and, and caused a tremendous amount of damage under those buildings prior to the nourishment event. In 2006, a county contracted with Weeks Marine to perform the dredging of the project, they dredged sand from offshore, about four miles offshore, is an area shoal offshore, where we found very good beach-compatible sand that was pumped up onto the beach, literally through a pipe, that was discharged on the beach, and then the sand was then spread throughout the system in order to create the post-construction dune and beach berm that we've identified to provide protection to upland properties for a twenty-five-year storm event was our design storm event. In 2006, we placed about three million cubic yards of a total cost of almost twenty million dollars. Fifty percent, fifty-eight percent of that came from the state, thirty-eight percent from an MSBU, and four percent from county revenue. The, it was anticipated that the project would, and it was designed to be re-nourished, to put more sand back in the system every eight years, which would have called for that to happen in 2014. Fortunately, the project has performed a little bit better than we have anticipated, but we're currently anticipating a re-nourishment in, in the year of 2015, 2016, in September, beginning of 2016. In 2010, at the west end of the project, there was a touch-up project that was done with a truck haul and using FEMA funding, was the primary source of that. As you may recall, the Gulf Islands National Seashore did not allow us to extend the project into the seashore, so we had to cut it short on, within the Navarre boundaries, and so the very west end of the project eroded more quickly than we would have preferred. Our initial design intent was to extend it in the Gulf Seashore to provide the transition to the natural beach system. 2010, we placed a small amount of sand, it was about eleven thousand cubic yards to restore or touch up that dune on the very west end of the project. In that case, about seventy-five percent of the funding came from FEMA, as this is considered an engineered beach under FEMA criteria. And last summer, we performed a, a monitoring survey of the beach, and the beach looked in pretty good condition. We still have predominantly the dune feature throughout most of the project area. This is a view looking west from the pier, and if we get further down the beach towards the west end, we can see that the, the erosion has reached some of the dune features up against the pier, excuse me, up against the, the dune itself, and begun to erode some of that dune near the west end. And, next slide, please, Roger. And this is, this is a survey drawing that shows are actually the design plans, again, consistent with the permits have been issued by the DEP and the Army Corps of Engineers. The red line corresponds to a slice through the beach, and the crosshatch area shows where we propose to put sand in order to restore that beach area, and most of the sand would be out on the beach berm, is, is that's where most of the sand has been lost, or most of the project area is represented here at this cross-section. But then if we look further west in the west end of the project where the dune has been impacted, we anticipate we'll have to rebuild that dune, this is near the western limits of the fill. As I indicated, we've obtained the necessary permits in January of this year, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection issued its permit, and just a couple of weeks ago, just before Thanksgiving, the Army Corps of Engineers released its offered permit to the county, which has been signed by county staff and returned to the Corps of Engineers, so we're, we're good and ready to proceed relative to permits. In concert with the funding application that we've submitted to DEP, and based on the July 2016 surveys, we've us, updated the estimated construction cost, and this eighteen and a half million roughly that is reflected here is the number that was submitted to DEP in a funding request. That includes not only the losses through July 2014, as reflected in the July survey, but also we've projected some additional sand losses between now and when we may, the construction may occur, currently anticipated to begin in September of 2015. At this point, focus on funding, and, and certainly, as alluded earlier in your discussion around your delegation priorities, funding is a, is a huge issue, and I'm going to touch quickly on some of these options on the federal funding perspective. There's a program, the Shore Protection Program through the US Army Corps of Engineers, that requires a congressional authorization that recently happened, for example, for Walton County, they've been pursuing that for about ten years, but if Santa Rosa County were to pursue this, it would not likely occur until 2023. Coming back to the Walton County example, they have authorization, but they don't have funding yet, and there are many projects, or some two-hundred billion dollars worth of core authorized projects that have not yet been funded by Congress. So that is, that is a long-term prospect, and certainly dependent upon federal appropriations. The Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, has a, a path by which engineered beaches where a community may maintain, monitor, and, and continue to re-nourish and maintain its beaches, they call it an engineered beach, and FEMA has participated in funding, as I alluded in the 2010 restoration, but also there's FEMA funding that is currently available, anticipated to be applied towards the 2015 re-nourishment of Navarre Beach. This is a summary of the state funding from last year's legislative session, and, and Navarre Beach barely missed the, the getting funded. They were right, right in the middle, in the bubble, as it's been characterized to me, where a lot of projects in the middle of, of the list that did not get funded, and Navarre Beach did not get funded last year. However, as we look ahead to, to this year, we think that we may see a different scenario. As alluded, we've applied for funds, it was done this past summer, late, late summer, those were submitted in August of this year. DEP staff is reviewing and ranking, it's typically done in January, although I've been told we may see a draft list as soon as this week, as that list has been prioritized by department staff, and it's gone through external review, as it's characterized by DEP staff, but that list may come out this week. The department is developing its strategic plan update, which we expect by February. Of course, the state legislative appropriation typically is concluded by March, so we ought to know by March where we sit, and I would say from past years of Governor Scott, very likely he will not veto what is approved by the legislative, legislature, that's yet to be seen, but I would expect if we were on the list in March, we should be good. And typically, those funds become available by July, and so a project agreement between the county and, and DEP would need to be implemented by July to allow for that September construction. I will note that tomorrow, there is a beach strategic plan, beach, strategic beach management plan meeting that can, that is open to the public, and may visit the department's website. It's really a, a planning document, not a funding document, that, the state's beach management plan identifies the Navarre Beach project as a desirable project, as part of that plan, but there is a meeting tomorrow that, that addresses it for your information. As we look at the local funding options, we prepared a, a report for the county in 2013 and presented in, in December of 2013, roughly a year ago, our analysis of different funding options. We looked at the county's general revenue fund, transient tax or tourist tax increases, an MSBU, as was used in the prior, to fund the prior 2006 project, perhaps a bridge toll, and then ultimately, also a, a potential sales tax increase. Any of these combinations can be used to generate the county's local share of cost, which we expect is going to be at fifty percent of that roughly eighteen point six million dollars. Next slide, please. In twenty, in July, as I alluded earlier, we performed a survey, and it's interesting to note that we found about ninety-nine percent of the sand that was placed in 2006, we can still identify where most of that sand is, and it's mostly offshore of the beach, it hasn't gone away from the area, it has moved offshore as we might have anticipated, and it, but that data, there is still about half as much, we need to put about half as much sand as we put in 2006 to put that beach and dune back to where it was, and that was planned again as part of the original project, intended to do just that, put that sand back. So the next steps ultimately are to finalize the design and the contract documents which we've provided to county we've provided to county staff for review, based on, those are finalized per, for it to be consistent with the permits that have been issued to date. It's necessary and desirable for the county to implement a local financial and administrative commitment. That's right out of DEP's rules. As DEP and FEMA funding are pending, I don't know that the county's gotten a check from FEMA yet, but it's promised, but DEP funding is still yet to be determined through this forthcoming legislative session. But as the rules speak to, they're looking for a 10-year comprehensive financial plan that would be reflected by board action. That is what the department looks for as an indicator of that commitment. That's right out of the current rules, which were adopted just last year and still in evolution, but that's the standard the department's applying. Ultimately, I would anticipate that once the financing is, financial commitment is in place, it would be appropriate for the county to bid the construction as soon as this spring, early to late spring at the latest, to allow for award in the summer and construction to occur in September of 2015, allow the construction to be completed outside the primary tourist season of Navar Beach. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Michael. Very informative. Any discussion by the board? Commissioner Cole?
Thank you. Michael, given in a perfect world, and the things from Amendment One fall through, and we're able to use some of those fundings for beach re-nourishment, and also, you know, apply the funding that's been allocated by the legislature, has there been any discussion yet of, instead of, you know, there's a lot of cost in mobilization, demobilization of this equipment, of very large cost. Has there been any discussion yet of putting this together in sections? Like you said, Walton County is waiting to get some. We know we need it, Escambia needs it. Instead of leapfrogging all over the state and losing millions and millions of dollars in mobilization, demobilization, come up with a plan to do sections at a time, four or five counties, and then the next four or five counties, and try to conserve some of these dollars, and put the sand on the beach instead of just dollars to float this boat around.
There has been an effort by the state to promote that. In fact, the state will award greater points to a community in the ranking process if, in fact, a regional project is proposed. I'm only aware of one regional project that has occurred in the state, and in fact, I was involved with that, in a project in St. Lucie County, where we tagged our bidding to coincide with the bidding associated with the Corps of Engineers bidding for the Martin County project immediately adjacent, the two project areas are budding each other, in fact. And at the end of the day, there was, we did get the points for the ranking, but the cost saving was only about $85,000. That was all that was provided by the contractor, and the bidding process is a cost savings.
Well, see, I don't understand that, because just when we had to demo for, because of the turtles we lost, and then come back online again, I think was three or $400,000, close to half a million dollars. So if that's just mobilization and demobilization costs, there's got to be some dollars out there that we can save if the state would take a hand, get a handle on this and start putting this in areas, rather than leaving it all on the backs of the county, and of course, they do help, but, you know, we're bidding the project, they're bidding the project. We need to get somebody, and perhaps that needs to be one of our concerns on our legislative agenda this time, is to emphasize our legislators that this needs to be taken a broader look at, rather than county by county.
I agree with you wholeheartedly, and I do think there is, I think the $85,000 didn't make sense to me either, but that was the bid savings that was identified and ultimately reflected in the awarded contract. I do agree that there is also potential opportunities with Pensacola Beach and Escambia's County's forthcoming project, and perhaps with Walton County and their forthcoming project. And as we move forward with the bidding schedule, that's something we'll look at and discuss with county staff, if there may be some mechanism by which we can tag with those communities in order to reduce those mobilization costs.
Obviously, a lot of that would have to do with having your funding in place so you could do all the projects in a region.
Absolutely. Contractors are very cognizant of the funding that's available for a project, as the state and federal agencies.
Any other comments by the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Rob Williams.
Thanks for the presentation. It is a critical, I think, what the term I heard, critically eroded beach. It's definitely an issue for all of us sitting up here, because this $70 million economic impact, from what we've estimated, is, you know, the Navar Beach tourism. Just quickly, the Corps of Engineers, the 2023 grant application, that I know you said there's $200 billion, it was a large number that's out there, but that's still waiting for funding, is that something that we could look at applying for now that could possibly be used for the next time that we need beach re-nourishment, since that would be right in the window of when we would be needing it again?
I think that, absolutely, you can, and I encourage the county to do that. There is a movement on the federal side to, by the American Shore and Beach Preservation Association, the national equivalent of FSBPA, to promote increased federal spending and participation in programs, and to reduce the time it takes for a federal project to be approved. But absolutely, interest by Santa Rosa County and this community would go a long ways to promote that federal program, and ultimately, potentially allow, again, depending upon congressional action, for federal participation.
Well, I just wanted to look for as many ways as possible that we can be more proactive than perhaps we've been in the past, and although, you know, we've got the additional cent now going for bed tax, and I know that funding has been an issue, I don't want to make it sound as if this board has not been looking for ways to solve this problem, because I know that you have, but just every possible funding source that we can be in the pipeline for would be great. Last question I have, and then I'd love to have the opportunity, obviously, to meet with you so I can be prepared to bring suggestions back for the workshop. You have, on one of your slides, it said the general fund, and it said that funding could be problematic. Seems a little broad. Could you just maybe, just give me, drill down a little bit deeper on why, in your mind, you feel it would be problematic? Because I think we've allocated it from, it was fund balance this year, wasn't it? We had to set aside funds to where we could apply for the grant.
Yes, in an effort to get maximum points, Mr. Walker worked through the budget process to commit general funds as a backup to whatever funding mechanism.
Basically, if they approve it, we don't have to wait for funding. We're saying we've got funding committed, so that helps you rank higher. So the general fund being problematic, I think I have an idea of why you would say that, but I'd love to hear you quickly tell me what you view as problematic.
I will, I think I'll refer you to the report that we prepared, and I'd be happy to make sure I get a copy of that to you, but ultimately, I will say simply, it's a reflection of the competing interests for county funds.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's what I was going to say, it's all about money and availability. Any other questions? Mr. Blaylock?
Yes, just as a follow-up to what you were just talking about, was the regional approach. We are in discussions with other agencies and other local governments. We've met with Oaklous County, it's obvious, Pensacola Beach, Escambia County, Walton County, in a regional meeting to look at the very thing of doing a regional study that would start down the road towards getting this qualified as a federal project. There's going to be significant expenditures front-end for the studies and that, and Michael and I will be talking about it, but do want you to know that we are in discussions with the other local governments.
Any other comments? Obviously, this is just information today, Michael. Appreciate everything you do, and good presentation.
Thank you very much, and Merry Christmas to you.
One of the things that we need to do, and Michael and I have talked, is, I mean, we need to really be sure that we kind of do a full court press with our legislators to guard this money. I mean, Commissioner Lynch had pointed it out, we've got four miles of the 400 and some odd miles of critically eroded beach, and nobody in the world cares about that beach except us. I mean, there's certainly not going to be the people in Tallahassee and other places, and we need to be as high on that list, and plus, we need to make sure that we don't have any predators around the money. I mean, it's the, we need, that's one of the things of Johnson and Blanton, they need to stay on, they need to be guarding this like it's their mama, you know? I mean, it's, it needs to be very important.
And one thing that I think Michael may have noted, but we're only eligible, and we've got the maximum eligibility is 50 percent, so we're still looking at that 50 percent match to the figures.
Do we need to take any action on this, other than information today?
Eventually, and as I alluded, I would encourage the county to confirm that funding source, the local funding source, before you go out to bid. And certainly, with an eye, between now and March, I think it would be desirable to do so, anticipating legislature appropriations to be potentially revealed, that the county be in a position to move forward with the bidding of the project. So at least by that point.
So here again, by the first of the year, shortly thereafter, we need to have a plan in place and bring something back to the board to take action on. Commissioner Lynch?
Mr. Chairman, this would probably be a good topic of discussion for either our workshop, or, you know, that second round of meetings in January, give us time to, because it's going to, we're going to have to devote, I would think, a significant amount of time, and we'll start talking about the nuts and bolts of the local match.
Sounds like a plan. Mr. Blaylock? Thank you, Michael.
Thank you. Again, Merry Christmas.
Item number two is a discussion of Southwest Perimeter Road for Peter Prince Airfield. It's tied to item number three. As you look at a projected aerial of Peter Prince Airport, currently, these are our southwest hangars. There is a dirt road leading to the south gate, and our tenants have been using that. The board has previously, through the Aviation Advisory Committee, recommended that we harden or pave this roadway to provide access off of the taxiway to the southern hangars. Also, we've ended our east perimeter road right here at the parking lot of the GA Apron, which is now a portion of the east FBO's lease, but we recommend, while we're doing that, to extend it as a minimum, at least, to the edge of this tree line. We've cleared and grubbed this property here to meet the FAA's requirement for our penetrations of this tree line here, but rather than go into here, there's been a request to the staff from the east FBO to obtain additional properties, so at the time we extend the roadway, we would stop here and then address it, because he's going to be approaching the staff, and our consultant is looking at the feasibility of putting helicopter fueling pads in this general area here. Probably, practically speaking, it would be better to have all of his property contiguous as one piece of property, and so we're looking at that here. And we also, one of the projects Commissioner Cole has discussed in the past, is we'll be in discussions with Chenon Ogletree, with their Economic Development Office, and PSC, about the feasibility of constructing an instructional building here for AMP directly across from this parking lot. So with that, we're just asking for permission on item number two and three to go out to contract. The plans and permits have been secured to pave the southwest perimeter road connection to the southwest hangars, and extend the east perimeter road, at least, to the existing tree line.
Any discussion by the board? Hearing none, I would move both two and three to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number four, Mr. Blaylock.
Item number four is a discussion of a 10-foot-wide drainage easement for Bond View, Unit Two. Bond View was a plat that was approved by the board and recently recorded. We require the developer to provide not only the 10-foot drainage easement on the plat, which he did on the backs of these lots, as you can see here, but also provide us an additional 10 feet off of the raw property that has yet to be platted, and this action by the board would accept that 10-foot drain, public drainage easement, to make that a total of 20 feet.
Discussion by the board? Move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes.
And finally, item number five is just a discussion of the paved road and drainage maintenance for the aforementioned Bond View, Unit Two, and that's that 48-lot subdivision located in working District One.
Any discussion by the board? Hearing none, move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Thank you, Mr. Blaylock. We'll now move to the Public Services Committee. Commissioner J.R. Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also wanted to say from earlier, thank you for all the time and effort that you put into coming up with the committee chairs and everything. I know that was, it's been a lot of time over the holidays and since reorganization, and I'm proud to serve as Public Services Committee Chair for the next year, and look forward to working with Mr. Gomillion and the rest of the staff at Public Services. We have four items today. One, the discussion of submitting an EMS grant application to the Florida Department of Health in the amount of $18,715, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documentation. There is no matching requirement. If you look at your supporting documents, you'll see that that goes towards different things with CPR training and stuff like that, so I'd like to move to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number two, we have discussion of grant agreements with the State Division of Emergency Management in the amount of $10,941, and authorize signature of all related documentation. The dollar-for-dollar match requirement will be covered with in-kind donations or contributions. I'd like to move to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number three, discussion of acceptance of a modification to the CERT grant agreement number 14C I K 1016702437, in the amount of $1,100, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documentation. The dollar-for-dollar match requirement will be covered with in-kind funding. I'd like to move to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
And item number four, discussion of the HHRP mortgage subordination request for the property located at 9016 Terrace Circle, Milton. This request is consistent with board policy. I'd like to move to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes the Public Services Committee for today.
Thank you, Commissioner Williamson. We move to Public Works. Commissioner Cole?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate your assignment. Public Works. Item number one is discussion of requests from ProBuild in Santa Rosa Industrial Park for periodic access into the county's storm water retention pond for water quality compliance testing as required by Department of Environmental Protection. Move that to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item two is discussion of drainage easement from D.R. Horton Incorporated on Lot 10, Block F in Ashley Plantation Phase Two. Mr. Whitfield, could you explain that to the board?
Yes, this is an area in Ashley Plantation where, back during the April floods, there was a significant washout, some significant erosion on private property due to water overtopping the roadway, because the drainage system that we have in place simply couldn't take all the water. And so what this drainage easement will allow us to do is to upgrade that drainage system to put in an additional storm drain into a county maintained retention pond, so that we can alleviate that flooding problem in future events.
Okay. Any other questions from members of the board? If not, I'll move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item three is discussion of resurfacing the following roads in District Two at an estimated cost of $158,243. Gulf Road, Nichols Creek Road, West Lynn Road, Riverstone Road, Fortune Road, the eastern 2,840 feet. Move that to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Cole. At this time, we move to Budget and Financial Management Committee. Commissioner Rob Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have 20 items from the Budget and Finance Management Committee this morning. Item number one, discussion of bids received for the repairs to the Midway Health Department Building. Low bidder meeting specifications is R.D. Ward Construction Incorporated with a bid of Request to move that to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number two, discussion of bids received for home substantial rehabilitation project located at 6851 Sagebrush Lane in Milton. Low bidder meeting specifications is Design Home Builders Incorporated with a bid of $26,740. I'd ask that that be moved to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number three, discussion of bid received for graded aggregate base for a road and bridge. Sole bidder meeting specifications is Martin Marietta with a bid of $30 per ton. Ask to move to Thursday's objection, Thursday's meeting without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number four, discussion of budget amendment 2014-180, in the amount of $190,756. Recognized TDC. Recognized TDC 1% collected. This is the additional bed tax collection in fiscal year 2014, and transfer to Fund 117 for beach berm restoration as approved at the August 28, 2014 Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting. Ask that this item be moved to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number five, discussion of budget amendment 2015-66 in the amount of $1 million to negotiate, initiate a contract with Motorola Solutions Incorporated for public radio system upgrade to P25 standards digital radio communication system as approved at November 13, 2014 Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting. Request this be moved to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number six, discussion of budget amendment 2015-67 in the amount of $18,486 to carry forward funds in the Road and Bridge Fund for drainage improvements in the Santander and Woodlawn Heights communities as approved at the November 13, 2014 meeting. I'm assuming that's the BOCC meeting. Move that to, request that we move that to Thursday's meeting without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number seven, discussion of budget amendment 2015-68 in the amount of $226,863 to carry forward excess revenues from the Electric Franchise Fee Fund to each of the five recreational districts and economic development as approved at the September 11, 2014 Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting. I'd ask that this item be moved to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number eight, discussion of budget amendment 2015-69 in the amount of $182,175 to carry forward funds from the Electric Franchise Fee to General Fund to correct budget amendment 2015-30. Excess revenues from the Electric Franchise Fund distributed to each of the five recreational districts were paid in error from the General Fund. This is just a correction, Mr. Chairman. I'd ask that this be moved to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number nine, discussion of budget amendment 2015-70 in the amount of $13,478 to transfer funds from the Capital Fund to the General Fund for the purchase of five coin machines for the libraries as approved at the November 13, 2014 Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting, and ask that this item be moved to Thursday's meeting without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number 10, discussion of budget amendment 2015-71 in the amount of $872,351 to carry forward funds for addition to sheriff's budget for capital equipment in the General Fund. This is related to patrol car purchase, other capital. Ask that this be moved to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes. This button keeps sticking on me. I'm going to have to get some WD-40, I guess, so.
Item number 11, discussion of budget amendment 2015-72 in the amount of $38,000 to transfer funds from the Capital Fund to the General Fund, to the General Fund and District Two Projects Fund for ADA compliant ground cover. That'll be $24,000, and obviously, we'll take that period to a comma, and a county-built storage facility at East Milton Park, $14,000. Obviously, the ADA compliant ground cover portion is $24,000, and I'd ask that this be moved to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number 12, Mr. Chairman, discussion of budget amendment 2015-73 in the amount of $986,426 to fund the completion of the multi-purpose path on East Bay Boulevard, County Road 399, from Area 3 Impact Fee Reserves as approved at the November 13, 2014 Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting. That was the last meeting at Tiger Point Community Center. That was a very popular decision. Ask that this be moved forward to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number 13, discussion of budget amendment 2015-74 in the amount of $143,650, excuse me, $143,650 to recognize federal home program grant and allocates to first-time homebuyer account in the grant fund. I'd ask that item number 13 be moved to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item 14, discussion of budget amendment 2015-75 in the amount of $12,041 to recognize the fiscal year 2014 Citizens Corp., $5,467 toward that, and CERT, $5,474 toward that, two respective grants, and a modification to fiscal year 2013 CERT grant, $1,100, and allocate for expenditure in the grant fund. I'd ask that item 14 be moved to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item 15, discussion of budget amendment 2015-76 in the amount of $45,305 to carry forward funds in the General Fund for one gas vehicle pickup truck for animal services as approved at the June 26, 2014 Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting, and ask this be moved to Thursday's meeting without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item 16, discussion of budget amendment 2015-77 in the amount of $120,550 to fund the contract with Pegasus Engineering for engineering services and development of four HMPG Drainage Improvement Grant Applications as approved at the November 13, 2014 Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting in the Road and Bridge Fund. I would ask that item number 16 be moved to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item 17, moving right along, discussion of budget amendment 2015-78 in the amount of $545,737 to carry forward unspent funds from the Peter Prince Tea Hangar Construction Project with 80% reimbursement by the state as approved at the April 24, 2014 Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting, and ask that item 17 be moved to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item 18, discussion of budget amendment 2015-79 in the amount of $21,725 to carry forward unspent funds from prior year to a pay-for-site inspection in the Santa Rosa Shores Canal MSBU Fund. I'd ask that item 18 be moved to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item 19, discussion of budget amendment 2015-80 in the amount of $38,800 to carry forward funds from the Capital Fund and Boding Improvement Reserves for the purchase of capital equipment for Navar Beach as approved at the November 13, 2014 Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting. I'd ask that this be moved to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
And item number 20, discussion of budget amendment 2015-81 in the amount of $111,922 to transfer funds from the Capital Fund to the General Fund for the 2015 Countywide Storage Area Network System as approved at the November 13, 2014 Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting. I would ask that item number 20 be moved to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Any further discussion of county expenditures or check register for members of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cole?
They were on my desk this morning. I initialled them, I guess, out of habit, and put them on Ashley's desk, so we'll see if we get them to Commissioner Rob Williamson's office for his approval.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Rob Williamson. We have concluded the agenda. We'll have, open it up to public forum now. Anyone wish to speak?
Wallace Mahoot, 5500 Cox Road, Milton, Florida. I was just wondering, can you tell me what regulates which roads will be resurfaced?
I'll ask Mr. Whitfield to respond, please.
We have a rating system where we rate the roads and prioritize, and then make recommendations to the board.
Does it depend on the amount of damage, or do citizens come to you and tell you there's a problem on the road, or?
Well, we certainly take citizen concerns, but it's primarily based on what our road ratings are.
Okay, thank you. And, Mr. Cole, I think you live on one of those roads that's going to be resurfaced? Riverstone Road?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Glad you noticed that.
Next. Anyone else from the public? Hearing none, seeing none, we are adjourned.